I've been notified that we do have a quorum. Last evening, I made a comment about how frustrated I was that I was not able to have complete control of the meeting and apologized. But I also communicated to everyone here that I appreciated those individuals here who maintained a very high level of civility. And I for one certainly appreciate that. And I am certainly hopeful that for the remainder of our, our meeting, how many more sessions it takes, that we're able to maintain that level of civility and be able to complete our task at hand. And that is to review all of these articles and make sure we walk out as we came in as members of one community. Okay? With that being said, this evening, we will start with Article 29.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the town appropriate $751,645 to pay costs for stormwater, parking, pedestrian access, and streetscape improvements in the downtown area, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto to be transferred from free cash. The amount appropriated by this vote shall be expanded in addition to all other grants, gifts, or other funds that may be received by the town on account of this project.
Motion has been made and seconded. There'll be a presentation. This is a different motion than we had in our warrant, our book.
I will describe that now.
Thank you.
Sure. You may notice that the total dollar amount and the source of funding is a bit different than the original article. Recognizing the financial concerns of Town Meeting, we worked with the Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Planning Director, the Town Administrator, and the Finance Director, as well as Town Council, to reduce the project cost and scope. Town Meeting opted to not move forward with two articles to be funded with free cash. We agreed to propose using these funds for the project and to completely eliminate the debt proposal for this project. The result is a reduction in the request of 30% from $1.1 million to $751,000. We believe we can accomplish the most critical aspects of this important economic development project with these funds in addition to the substantial grant funds available. Planning Director Lori Connors and Master Plan Implementation Committee Chair Rick Leaf will continue the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Good evening. My name is Rick Leaf, and I'm Chairman of Master Plan Implementation Committee, or the MPIC, as we've become to be known, and with me is our Planning Director Lori Connors. The MPIC was formed by the Select Board after the most recent Town Master Plan was completed in 2020 to review the plan and to work with the town to ensure that recommendations in the plan are implemented. Article 29 Streetscape Improvements for Blake and Pierce Street proposes a project related to a key portion of the master plan that was completed in 2020. Can we bring up the next slide, please? A major point of emphasis in the 2020 master plan and also in prior master plans completed in 1988 and 1997 is the desire of residents of Northborough to see the downtown improved, to become more attractive, to attract more shopping and dining options, and to improve parking and walkability in the area. And behind me, you can see a statement out of the master plan referring to that input that we got from many public meetings we held during the development of the master plan. Can we bring up the next slide, please? In support of these goals, the MPIC, working with the town, commissioned the creation of a downtown revitalization plan, which was completed in 2024. This plan highlights as a key opportunity the area, starting with the old Town Hall at 4 West Main Street, continuing down Blake Street to Pierce, and including the fire station on Pierce Street, which will become vacant when the new fire station is completed, and municipal parking and War Memorial Park at the corner of Pierce and Hudson Streets. So if you look at the slide behind me, on the left-hand side of the pink area is the intersection of Blake Street and Main. And just above that, you can see where 4 West Main, the old Town Hall, is right now. And you can see the pink area proceeds all the way down Blake Street. And for the purposes of this project, it then makes a right turn, and it heads down Pierce Street to the corner of Hudson, where there's a municipal parking lot and an existing War Memorial Park. The reuses of 4 West Main and the fire station connected together by an improved Blake Street offer a real chance to begin the process of creating a downtown consistent with the vision of a revitalized downtown, which residents had expressed in the last three Northborough master plans. Article 29 presents the first step to be taken in realizing this vision by making improvements on Blake Street and Pierce Street, which support future redevelopment in this area by improving the attractiveness, the walkability, and parking in this part of town, and by demonstrating that Northborough encourages revitalization of its downtown. Approval of Article 29 will begin the implementation of a major section of the master plan prioritized by the residents of Northborough. And at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Lori to talk about the details of the project.
Thank you, Rick. So once again, my name is Lori Connors, and I'm the Planning Director here in Northborough. So the next few slides are meant to show you the existing conditions along Blake Street and Pierce Street. So this first picture shows you Blake Street from the intersection with Route 20. On the left-hand side, you see 4 West Main Street, which the town acquired about a year ago. It's a largely vacant five-story building. The only use that is currently in the building is a dentist's office. On the right-hand side is the Christmas Tree Park, which was quite lovely in its heyday. It's looking a little tired these days. Some of the issues with this park are the electronic message center, which has been broken for many months. There is a seating wall that is falling apart. There's walkways that are also, the bricks are dislodged and broken, and the landscaping is missing and shoddy in various locations. Here are some images of the municipal parking lots on Blake Street. So the upper left-hand corner, you can see the significant puddling that is evident there on a regular basis after virtually every storm event. And the reason for this is there is no drainage at all within Blake Street or the municipal parking lots. The end result of this is significant cracking of the pavement and heaving in certain locations. And then another issue, I'm sorry, I've been suffering from allergies for the last couple of weeks, and it's been really a struggle. So there's also some used clothing bins that certainly don't add to the attractiveness of the area. These photos show the sidewalk along the west side of Blake Street. So you can see that along this short stretch of about 500 linear feet of street, we have three different sidewalk configurations. So to start, we have kind of the ideal of the concrete sidewalk with vertical granite curb. Then we transition to asphalt sidewalk with no berm or a little berm, followed by sidewalk that is separated by a grass strip. It's not ideal to have this many different configurations of sidewalk and curb for aesthetic, drainage, and pedestrian safety reasons. The ideal is to separate the sidewalk from the paved width of the roadway with a vertical curb. Here are some images of Pierce Street from the intersection with Blake. So as you turn right and head towards the railroad tracks, there is no sidewalk at all. And this is a real shame because there is a municipal parking lot associated with the War Memorial Park. It would really help alleviate our public parking problem in the downtown if there was an accessible route, a pedestrian accessible route to the downtown. So at the project onset, we set out a number of goals that we were looking to accomplish. First of all, we wanted to attract new businesses. We have a number of vacant storefronts, and certainly 4 West Main Street is largely vacant. So we really wanted to attract business to these, to these locations. We wanted to raise awareness of and increase the number of public parking spaces. Most people don't know that the lots along Blake Street and Pierce Street are municipal parking lots. So they may be afraid to park there and walk between the various uses. So we want to encourage parking, and we can do that with signage, and also to increase the number of parking spaces by providing on-street parking on Blake. We want to enhance public safety throughout the project scope. We want to beautify the downtown, as Rick had mentioned. We want to address climate change through incorporating low-impact design features such as trees and rain gardens. And we want to address our stormwater management problem so we can also extend the life of the paved surfaces through drainage. So this is the concept plan. We ended up hiring the Beta Group to work with the town on a streetscape design, and that was funded through $250,000 of ARPA funds last year. So the Beta Group has been working with a focus group consisting of staff, key board and committee members, and three downtown business and property owners. So what this concept plan shows is an updated park with a new pedestrian plaza, pergola for shade, benches and seat walls, walkways, colorful landscaping, and a bike rack, a new drainage system installed along Blake Street and in the municipal parking lots to eliminate puddling. Parking lots will be reconfigured, repaved, and striped. New ADA-compliant concrete sidewalks, ramps, and crosswalks will make the area more walkable for people of all ages and abilities. And by adding a new sidewalk along the east side of Blake Street, we will really be able to narrow some of those vast driveway openings, like for example, the opening between the municipal parking lot and 14th Blake Street is 150 linear feet long. That is completely unnecessary. So by installing the sidewalk, we'll be able to narrow those widths and really make this area safer to maneuver for both pedestrians and vehicles. So street trees, other plantings, and decorative LED lights with banner hardware will soften the look of the street and encourage people to park once and walk between uses. New on-street parking added to Blake Street will ensure that no public parking spaces are lost by this new design. So this is what it'll look like from the street view. So you can see the Christmas Tree Park, the Christmas Tree, I know folks are very concerned about that. It will remain. This proposal does not include cutting down that Christmas tree. But you can see a significant new landscaping. This is actually the view from the intersection with Route 20 and 4 Blake. On the left-hand side, you can see seating walls for pedestrians outside of 4 West Main. There's also a pergola. The perpendicular parking will be converted into diagonal parking. We will maintain the flagpole, of course. This is a view from about the midpoint. You can see the bike rack, the crosswalk, the pergola. This is a view from inside the pergola, so you can see what a nice environment this will be for gathering. We could hold concerts there, truck festivals and the like. And I know this is very popular for the middle school kids to hang out, so they'll have a nice space to be, and trash barrels. And here's another view looking towards Pierce Street. You can see the decorative streetlights with the banners. And this is a close-up of the rain gardens. So this is an innovative way to convert what is typically an eyesore, and what I mean is the catch basin and man-hold detention basin combination into an amenity. So this serves very well as an infiltration basin for, for stormwater flow, but is also attractive. So how much is this going to cost? Unfortunately, it's not free. So in total, when you put the design costs into account, it's about $2.5 million. $280,000 has been secured to date. As I mentioned, we did receive ARPA funds from the Select Board. And then we also got a $30,000 economic development earmark from the state. So that, some of those funds are also going to pay for construction oversight. So the shortfall is $2.1 million approximately today. I submitted a $500,000 grant application to the Complete Streets Program. I have also, a couple of weeks ago, submitted an MVP action grant. That's, the aim of that grant program is to address climate change. And then this evening, I am asking for a municipal appropriation. Originally, that request was $1.1 million, but as Mitch had mentioned, we all heard the comments. So I think that we can still proceed with the bulk of this project by that reduced request. So that would pay less than 50% of the construction cost. I'm hoping to fill that shortfall with another grant. So why now? Downtown revitalization has been talked about seriously by the town of Northborough for 36 years. That was the first time it appeared in the master plan in 1988. The downtown has been waiting a very, very long time. So 4 West Main Street, as I mentioned, is largely empty today, and I think that that's actually a benefit. We don't want to be reconstructing the parking lot, the municipal parking lots, when that building is full. The ideal time to do that is now, where there is little parking demand in those municipal parking lots. And also, the benefit is improving the streetscape sets the stage for the building's reuse. It will make the building more attractive to business. Inflation. The lesson learned from the fire department project unfortunately is that waiting will significantly drive up construction costs. Inflation is approximately 5% per year. Of course, with things that are happening on the national level, that inflation number may be low. Grant opportunities. There are grant opportunities available today that could fund the vast majority of the project costs. However, we don't know if those grant opportunities will be available in the future. So originally, when we were partially funding this with debt, the impact was going to be $17 per year, but now I'm happy to say there will be zero tax impact from this project. So the domino effect. That's another reason why it's important to go forward with this project today. It is well documented across the country and certainly within Massachusetts that streetscape improvement projects drive additional private investment. And often, that private investment is in the form of facade improvements to the abutting buildings. There may be additions. There may be new construction that goes up. Certainly, there are businesses that are attracted to the empty storefronts, and that means new jobs and a more vibrant and successful downtown. So how do I know this? From personal experience. Before I arrived in Northborough, I was the Planning Director for the town of Millbury for 16 years. And I embarked on a two-phase downtown revitalization project. The first phase was completed in 2020 in the midst of the COVID pandemic. And then the second phase was completed in 2023. And I happen to live in Millbury, so every single day, I drive through this downtown at least twice a day. So I have been able to have a front-seat look at the transformation of the downtown. And I'm happy to say that when we started the streetscape project, we had a number of commercial vacancies. Those vacancies are all gone. They've all been filled up with an exciting variety of businesses, including Spicy Water Distillery and Penny Pincher's Brewery. I know lots of folks in town would like to see a brewery in the downtown, so this is a good way to get one. And 11 private property owners have invested in significant facade improvements to their downtown buildings. Millbury's downtown isn't that large, so the fact that 11 private property owners have made improvements is really significant. There's increased activity throughout the downtown and an improved sense of pride overall. So what is the project timeframe? So of course, right now, we're in spring 2025. I already told you about my grant-writing activities. This project is still in design. We're at the preliminary plan stage, which is about 30%. So the Beta Group is diligently working a way to advance the design. We will be having a second community outreach workshop most likely in June. This summer, on this, we have secure land disturbance permit, but I have since found out that we don't need one. So that's one step that we can skip over. So the final design plans and construction cost estimate will be presented to the Select Board probably in the September timeframe. Finalize the bid specs in the fall, go out to bid hopefully in January, hire a contractor, and ideally, it'll start construction in April 2026 and complete it nine months later in December of that year. So I'm just going to turn it over to Rick for last parting moments convo.
Thanks, Lori. The committee has been working on downtown revitalization basically since it was formed. When we first reviewed the 2020 master plan, there were a number of different recommendations, but many of them tie together between economic development and the desire of the town to move forward at some point with beautifying and revitalizing our downtown area. So to that extent, we've been working in the background on that really ever since that leading up to our downtown revitalization study and plan that was completed last year. In the meantime, you've probably noticed that planters been installed along the sidewalks downtown and in the traffic island at Church Street, thanks to Lori for doing that. We've worked with the garden club to increase the planting of flowers in the downtown. The intersection of Church Street and Route 20 has seen some perennial varieties going in, as well as the intersection of, I mean, 135 and Route 20, as well as Church Street and Route 20. So we've been working to do what we can in the short term. And we talked about the fact that we realized that these are difficult financial times and didn't even make sense to bring up an article like this at this town meeting. But we really wanted to present to the town the fact that the committee has been working on this project for a significant amount of time and want to give the town an option as to how to proceed with revitalization in the area. And consistent with the plan, this stretch of town from the old Town Hall at 4 West Main back to the fire station on Pierce and over to the Memorial Park is a wonderful place to start. And so we really want to give the town the opportunity to think about this, hear the plan tonight, and decide what to do. Once again, we're not blind to the financial position the town is in. We also understand there's been desire for a long period of time to do a project like this, and we think this is the right time to at least bring it forward. Whatever the town decides to do, you know, will be done kind of thing. But we just want to make it apparent that a group of people have been working significantly for quite a period of time to go this far and now have a plan which we feel is workable if the town agrees to go forward and do it. And with that, you know, we'll end the discussion now and just take any questions and comments.
Before this discussion, I'd like to get the opinion of the Appropriations Committee on Article 29.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator. At the time that this was presented under debt, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously not to approve this article, recommend not to approve this article. We have not had a chance to meet as a committee to opine on the changes.
Thank you. And from the Financial Planning Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee, by a majority, recommended to not, I repeat, not approve this article. At $1.1 million on a $2.2 million project, the contingency on the grants was not secured. The idea of it, of it debt raising and additional cost on the taxpayers was a concern, and the entire committee was engaged in conversations on this. And it's only till 30 minutes ago, we were aware that the article was kicked down from $1,101 to $751,000.
Thank you. I see that there is a line. And to be honest with you, I'm going to go in alphabetical order because I didn't see who got up first, okay? So I'll go with microphone A.
A little short. Alyssa Kalopolis, 201 Howard. I have a young family in town. We moved to Northborough in 2018 because of the schools. We wanted a family, and we love the town and the community. I've established myself here, and the one comment I hear over and over is, "Northborough hates businesses." They hate businesses. Not business-friendly. And honestly, have you, has anyone else here been to Applefest and walking around and you walk, you cross that highway? It's, 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 it's kind of scary with a young family. If we move forward with- If we move forward with this, we're kind of securing the future of Northborough for my family, and I know we're all in, no one's excited about the tax increase, but I think if we approve this, this is securing a better future for our town, especially for a young family like myself and being able to have this. And then the idea of being able to invite businesses into this space, maybe a brewery, maybe a game shop, I don't know, whoever wants to come here and lower our taxes, right, is ideal for a young family like myself and where I could bring my son and we can hang out, and yes, we have parks, but I think this is the future of our town, and hopefully everyone will agree or those who agree. That's it.
Amen. Nice job.
Microphone B, please.
Yeah, Mr. George, wannabe civil tonight. I would like you to tell me a time limit. I would really appreciate that you don't say that I go off topic, but can I have a certain round of time for this?
Well, I will give you a time limit of three minutes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay? And I do need to tell you if you're out of bounds, okay?
I will stay off topic above. Okay, because of my autism, you know, I want to, I'll say a quick, quick, brief prayer. You know, I want to pledge allegiance to the principles of the republic for which the flag stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, indeed with liberty and justice for all." Grace and peace to Joanna Sophia Shekiniah, glory in the highest. Praise and honor to my Lord Jesus Christ, Liberator of all men indeed, in the name of Jesus. Amen. See, to think that His illustrious Holy Majesty and associates are against all spending or some conservative republic, it is not true at all. In fact, we proposed plans for downtown revitalization. We gave it to Mitch Cohen. We gave it to Stephanie. We have a bunch of ideas, and we hope that just because you might not like our personality does not mean that somebody's ideas are bad. The design of this is good, okay? That narrowing the streets is good. The downtown needs to be more walkable. Absolutely, absolutely. The biggest issue with bringing businesses, unlike Millbury, okay, is all the cars in the road in, in, in Main Street. And as long as that's the case, downtown is not going to be walkable, okay? You have to kind of tear up that road, okay? And that you have to, this is a good start. I think that it costs way, way too much money, that it can be done much cheaper, and I've offered ways through volunteer work. This is also an issue with regards to specialization and the issues behind specialization. You don't need a million feasibility studies to plant a bunch of trees. You don't need a million feasibility studies to show this, but the planting of more trees is good. I recommend more like kind of fruit trees, more native plants, more walkable space is good. Why don't we use natural stone from, you know, the quarries, you know, and have volunteers build the sidewalks themselves? You could do it for volunteer labor. It can be very, very cheap. Other than that, so the general design, and I hope to be working with this design because this is a passionate thing of mine to create natural beauty. Things I want to suggest about parking is it's to make a parking garage at seventy-seven Harvey Street, and then again, cut down the parking as much as possible, and once you're able to do that, then you're able to track the businesses. Also, it'd be nice to get a train station here, once again, to get the communal rail to come up here, and the more pedestrians you get, and that makes downtown more friendly for, for small businesses, which of course, we absolutely support. This can be, beauties in the eye of the hole. This, this is a good design. It can be done much, much cheaper. I'm willing to contribute labor to it personally. I have a bunch of ideas about this. So I hope that Mitch would share our plans that we wrote about the development for this, but we're willing to work with this. We're willing to, we're willing to work with this, and we hope that perhaps that the native plants are not just aesthetic, but also useful and could be built like a local economy, and hopefully, we can make Stephanie's makeup here with locally grown plants. So that, that's what I want to say.
Thank you.
John Campbell, twenty-nine Spruce Hill Drive. I'm here to speak in support of this article. So if any of you have walked recently in the downtown of a neighboring community, be it Hudson, Westboro, or Millbury, for example, and you look around and said to yourself, "Boy, I wish Northborough could be more like this." Well, that doesn't happen overnight. It happens with planning in a project that's proposed here in this article, and with that planning, you, you put the improvements in place and the businesses will come. And if businesses come, people come, we improve the community, we improve our income, we possibly reduce our taxes. So you have to lay the groundwork, and that's what this project does. I just wanted to express support, and also for Lori Connors, very hard work on this. I appreciate all you've done on it.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Thank you. I'm Carter Brandon, twenty-two Sherlin Drive. I was wondering, given that, well, hopefully, will be later tonight or later in this meeting, we have a couple articles related to Four West Main Street, and I was wondering, as, you know, if, if those are approved and there is, you know, proposals and applicants for that property, if as part of the negotiation of the lease, sale, or tax agreement, part of the cost of this project could be shifted to whoever acquires Four West Main Street.
I have heard that comment before. There are a significant amount of improvements that must be made to Four West Main. For example, the elevator doesn't, is not safe and it needs to be replaced. This municipal parking lot, I recommend to stay municipal parking instead of being sold with Four West Main Street. So that would make it the town's responsibility to upgrade the municipal parking lot. So I, I suspect that, given the amount of work that needs to be done to Four West Main, it will not be attractive to a user or a potential purchaser to also put the burden of improving Blake Street.
Okay. And then as a follow-up, as, to, to consider the possibility of if, if that property is going to be sold, that rather than giving that property away, if some money could be earned from the town from the sale in order to offset the cost of this project. Thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Marr, forty-four Weston Terrace. Lori, thanks for all your hard work on this. I know it's been a, a, a project that you, it's been a considerable amount of time on, so thank you. Just to kind of echo the previous speaker's comments, I, I do have concerns. I mean, first and foremost, I, I'd like a more walkable downtown, one with more character, pedestrian-friendly, commercial, business-friendly as well. I'm just not sure this is the correct project for us to start with. It's, it's certainly a challenging site. You know, it's limited on space, but where my concern is, is really with the previous gentleman who just spoke, who, who, who said that basically West, Four, excuse me, Four West Main Street, it's not mutually exclusive, in my opinion, to this project. I believe that the value, the value of, of Four West Main Street is going to heavily rely upon parking, as many, as pretty much all buildings do in a suburban environment. And I don't believe, I, Lori asked the question, I guess, what is the square footage of Four West Main, and theoretically, what would be the parking ratio of the municipal lot as designed?
So the parking requirement is based on the uses, so it's impossible to say because, of course, we don't know what the uses will be. So the, so the parking requirement for restaurant space, for example, is different than for retail space for a multifamily, for example. So I can't really tell you what I could, and maybe somebody else can say what the total square footage of the building is.
Yeah, if I could rephrase it just to basically ask what the, what the parking ratio would be based upon the square footage.
Well, I can tell you that this proposal has forty-seven public parking spaces.
Okay.
So that's total. That includes on-street and off-street parking spaces that are municipal.
Okay, okay. Because I do really particularly feel that the, the, the more available parking, obviously, the more attractiveness Four West Main will be get. And just like the previous gentleman mentioned, that I do believe that it's kind of in the best interest of the town to kind of allow private business to generate value for that asset, and hopefully, the town can subsequently get the social benefit of that private investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Hi. Arlene Marshall, one six two Whitney Street. And I remember when that master plan was made, and this certainly seems to follow along in towards achieving the goals of that master plan. Did I hear you correctly that if we approve this tonight, this doesn't have a tax impact?
Correct.
Correct, okay. My other concern is very practical. I can see this, you know, encouraging people to hang out downtown and do things downtown. Is there going to be any provision for public restrooms in town that might be needed? And if not, maybe that could be, that could be a part of Four West Main, that, you know, public restrooms could be, you know, included in that building so that people would have a place to use.
Yes, I'm not sure what the future is for Four West Main. So currently, it's a public building, but it, it may be sold or leased. I'm, I'm not sure, so we can't really comment on that. Certainly, there are restrooms in that building, so I, if it is retained by the town, that could be a possibility.
I just think it's important to think about that and provide them, you know? Yeah. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Hi. Cynthia Turner, Church Street. I'll, I'll try to be brief, and the question I have will be brief, and I don't expect a full answer. I've only been here a year and a half, and it does behoove me to educate myself on everything I can, Northborough and, and all the regular meetings that happen, including the planning meeting, and, and I won't pretend to be knowledgeable about all the budget stuff, so I'm not really going to speak to that. But as a, as a citizen and also as a community advocate, I, I do have a couple comments before I get to my question, and that is a suggestion. For, for example, in, in the planning and, and all the meeting, I don't know if you are in touch with community-related organizations such as Strong Towns. Strong Towns has a president, presence in Arlington. I'm about to start one for Framingham. They're in Northampton. They're all over the place, but they're very focused on responsible, sustainable, and community-oriented towns, which includes walkability, a myriad of things. So I strongly ask that you connect with an organization, that organization specifically, possibly there are more. See, I am concerned, I, I will voice a concern about the selling off of buildings. This will come up again when it comes to White Cliffs, for example, but, and I've, my feeling about government is I don't want them to own everything, and I'm very, very little government regulation, but necessary regulation. But at the same time, I just came from Framingham, where I lived since two thousand, and because of their mistakes and giving into corporations, they really, really messed up that town, now a city, for, what are we on, eight years as a city now? And, or seven years. And they had this, they had corporations holding shopping centers hostage. I mean, it was awful, and my dream was to move back there. I think I've since changed my mind because it, it's, it's bad. And I also hail from Plymouth Meeting, Pennsylvania, which is outside of Philadelphia, literally sitting on a major piece of the Underground Railroad, and I saw what happened there when greedy builders and everyone came along and the township did not claim responsibility to these historic sites, and we had to fight for it. That should never be a discussion, obviously. So these are the types of concerns. So in, in making a responsible, sustainable community oriented downtown and further, to keep those things in mind, keep the corporations out. We already have CVS there. That is not, there, there is no quintessential New England town center looking at that CVS, but it's already there.
You have twenty seconds.
Okay. We also don't need the three gas stations there. That's a later discussion, but if we could keep it to small, local, independent businesses, and then I, I, this won't, this is just about approving the budget tonight, but my question, my quick question is, approving or not approving, will there be opportunity to go through all this stuff at a later date?
Yeah, so of course, the, the design is already fully funded, so regardless of what happens here, we will proceed. We are under contract with the beta group, so we will complete the design and the bid documents. The challenge, of course, is when you wait, opportunities that are available now may not be available in the future, so, and the costs, of course, will come up, increase as time goes on. So I have already submitted those two grant applications. If those are funded, but the town portion is not funded, then we will do the best we can with the limited amount of funds that we have available. So we could phase the project. We could do one street, like maybe Pierce Street, but not due Blake Street. So there are different opportunities that would be presented by not getting all the funding, so.
Okay. But the intricacies of how this is all going to come together besides the money, that's still forthcoming discussion.
That's still going forward. Like I said, we have another community outreach meeting, so the, the first one talked about like the benches and the pergola, like what style of features people liked and didn't like, and so the design team is modifying the design to take into account the feedback received, and their modifications will be presented at that next community outreach meeting, and we'll be looking for feedback.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Thank you. Eric Martin, thirty-two Weston Terrace. Lori, I just want to say to you and your team, thank you so much. Being at the, you know, the master plan implementation meetings, this is definitely what we're looking for. Most of my comments have already been said. I rise in support of this article, and really just anecdotally, right, working for the city of Worcester in the early aughts, they were always telling how if you want to get investment into your town, you, it's curb appeal, right? Everybody goes to sell your house. You need to have your house looking nice, and it does have this domino effect. You know, in, in having a small business in Upton, the EDC always tells us that their idea is to have a municipal parking, and people come to a brewery and have a drink and then go for a walk while they are, money left and right out of their pockets. And a easy example of that is multiple years ago, my in-laws' surprise gave us childcare on Year's Eve, and I wanted to go to Hudson with my wife. So now that's money in Northborough that's going to Hudson. That's lowering Hudson's tax bill, as opposed to if we do this, we can get people from Hudson and other places here, which will lower our tax bill. So again, I rise in support of this. Thank you very much.
Microphone A, please.
Tom Boland, forty-seven Bartlett Street. I appreciate all the work that all you people have done on this, the volunteers with Master Plan Committee, the volunteers that are on the advisory committees and everything, but I see this as nothing more at this point than a luxury. You talk about potential grants, but we don't have any potential grants. We're struggling to pay for rotting dump trucks, antique ambulances that are a dozen years old. We know we have potential proposition, two and a half override coming out. I know this isn't coming out of tax dollars right now, but it is taking away three-quarters of a million dollars of our, of our free cash, right? We have school roof projects that have been mentioned that are coming up and everything else, and I really think we're putting the cart before the horse. We don't know what we're going to do with the old town hall at Four Main Street. We don't know what's going to become of the old fire station. The previous fire station took decades, right, to adjudicate what happened to that. We don't know what's going on down there. We don't know how it's going to play out. This is a luxury item, as far as I'm concerned at this point, and we are putting the cart before the horse because we don't have the answer on grants. We don't have any answers on potential federal grants, state grants, public, private partnerships or whatever, and I think we're putting the cart before the horse, and this has to wait till we have those answers for a presentation, be it next year, be it the year after. I don't think it's anything we can afford at this point. Thank you.
Microphone B, please.
Thank you. Kristen Williams, Tichon, thirty Oger Ave. I also want to join everyone and thank you for your time. Lori Connors and the committee. I know it's many, many hours of work to put this together over years, and I do appreciate that. I just think we've heard a lot of talk over the last couple of nights about how we need to spend less. The tax increase that we're seeing this year at ten percent is not sustainable. I've had that conversation, you know, with my husband again and again and again. That slide that Mr. Little put up on Monday, which I think I first saw in August at the summit, where we're at from eight thousand to about thirteen thousand by twenty-thirty in the annual taxes, that literally stops my heart. Like, I'm going to start calling it the heart attack slide. It did it in August, did it on Monday, and every time in between when it was presented to the select board. I will be taxed out of my town that I grew up in, where I hope to watch my kids graduate from this school like I did. I won't be able to do that if that slide comes to fruition. And I appreciate the town staff. I appreciate Mr. Little showing us this is where we are, this is where we're going, because that puts this is where we're going, because that puts it on us, the body in this room, to say, how are we going to change that? If we want to change that trajectory we saw on Monday, then we've got to start saving money and cutting things. There's also been talk about those on fixed income, and how this is hitting them, right, the economy and the increase in taxes, and that's all true, it's also hitting families like mine. We've seen our buying power evaporate with double-digit inflation, wages staying the same. In the fall, there was a school committee, I should mention, I am on the school committee, but I'm speaking as a private citizen, not for the school committee. But in one of the superintendent's reports was the percent of families or kids in the K-8 system in Northborough who are at or below the poverty line, and since 2020, it went up substantially. It was scary when I saw that slide. And that's not our enrollment, our enrollment has stayed about the same. That's an indication of what's happening to the families in this town, as we again watch eggs go to $9 a dozen, and we can't do, we can't just keep doing that. So we have to change our path. I know that this is no longer debt, so it's coming out of free cash now, which is, you know, essentially kind of a savings account, but I think that that money would be much better placed to offset costs that are coming in the next budget season, to offset an increase in next year's taxes. I would rather see that money go there and prevent us from having another 10% increase, because it's not just this year, next year, the year after, the year after that, they're all going to be hard budget years. We're going to have to make difficult cuts. Last night, this body decided not to put $400,000 aside in fund to make sure that we can keep the eight firefighters that we got from the grant in three years, we know that's a need. I mean, nationally, we were recognized as one of the few towns nationally that really needed this, and therefore got the grant. And we decided, as a body, okay, we're going to actually, we're going to put that off, though, we're not going to save up for that, we're going to deal with it when it comes because we're looking at a two and a half proper override, because we need to keep that money free. So I'm just a little confused that it's almost a double now that we're talking about. The number that we're talking about now is almost double that we want to spend on this project, which, again, thank you for your time, and it looks beautiful, but it's, as someone said, a nice-to-have, not a need.
You are at three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Hello, my name is Andrew Clark at 493 Main Street. I come to support this project from a skeptic's point of view. I was originally very skeptic of the town common project, and I was overjoyed at the result of that, as I think most people in town are, that, I guess it was my lack of vision, that I couldn't see how wonderful it would be when it was actually articulated in the whole process. So I'm taking that same sort of approach here, where that little bit of what we did over there in the town commons, this sort of piece, it's the next piece in the puzzle, there's going to be continual pieces in the puzzle if you want to, you know, beautify the downtown area, if you want to change the downtown area. And I think that, that, this, you know, whether it's this year or next year or whatever, this is a piece that has to be addressed, and I think this year is a good year. I also think that we don't know, if there are grants available now, we should be searching them out, because we absolutely don't know what's going to be happening with grants, either state or federal, in the future, because obviously they are, especially at the federal level, they're doing cost-cutting, and that's going to necessitate stuff at the state level. So if there are opportunities now to get funds, that we do have to, we can't pretend like those are going to be here in the future, we need to react now to access that funds. And again, with everyone else here, Laurie and Rick, I really appreciate all the effort you guys have done, whether this project or on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Susie Sutlaka, 8 Emerson Road, and I want to state, I'm on the zoning board, I'm also community affairs committee, we do the tree lighting and PTOs, so I know a little bit about cost-cutting. And Laurie, I appreciate all the time, I know you've worked on this for like a year and a half, maybe two years, so I also want to let the crowd know that everything I'm saying to Laurie right now, she's heard, probably about starting a year and a half ago when she came to the zoning board and asked our opinion, but now I'm stating it for everyone to hear. And I added a few things based on the presentation. So Blake Street, Blake Street is basically, I don't know how many people drive down it every day, I never drive down it, and I think the fact that it's a parking lot could be easily solved by signs that say parking. And Scott, DPW Scott, as I like to call him, because there used to be Scott Rogers, and I used to talk about them both all the time, so DPW Scott can do a great job paving it. And that would be much cheaper than what we're being asked about here. And as you can see, my tree, I like to call it my tree here, DPW Scott does a great job, you guys think it looks great, and you think it's going to last a long time, and that we should save it and save that park, that tree's dying, it only looks great because Scott and the guys put a lot more lights on it every year, and all the trees around it have been taken down because they were diseased. So I have expressed the fact that the tree's going to have to come down, I'm going to have to find a new tree, and I've been telling everyone, including Scott, and we've talked about it a little bit, do we want to move the new tree to the town common? I might need just a little bit longer than three minutes, just to like let everyone know and put them on notice about the tree lighting. So the tree lighting might need to move, maybe we use the beautiful new town common, like, in the back. This park, because I also know, we need downtown parking, right? So we talked, maybe we get rid of the pocket park, this has been like years and years before any of this was even discussed, so I just want to let everyone know, those discussions have been had for years. And it's not my decision, by any means, but that was my input, because I planned the tree lighting with my committee. So Blake Street, where does it go? It goes to Pierce Street, which is a bunch of residents, right? So we're fixing this up for a bunch of residents. The private businesses will benefit. We established last night, when we voted for the town hall to get the new heating and air conditioning system, that they are going to be there for 10 to 20 years, right? So we know that they're not going to be moving to 4 West Main. So we're going to be putting all this money in for private businesses, and not for the benefit of us. I love our private businesses, there's many private businesses, I go in weekly, and I know everybody by staff, because I ask for donations, looking for donations always, me, looking for donations for the PTO, for town concerts, anything, find me if you have something to donate. How many parking spaces are there now, and how many will there be proposed to be after?
Unfortunately, you have 15 seconds.
Okay, so you can answer the after. Okay, so I just want to also remind everyone that some of these grants could connect the sidewalks from like Z School to the library, kids can't walk safely. My kids don't even go to Z, but they can't walk safely, so you could use that Complete Streets grant to connect those. And the classroom is the most expensive room in this town. People move here for the schools, and our school committee tightened the belt enough, and they had to let four staff members go. So we need parking, we don't need that little park, but maybe we do it in phases. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Microphone A, please.
Jeff Amberson, 260 Green Street. First, not to pile on, but, you know, for the work you folks have done, I think it's great, and I know that, you know, countless hours went into this. I will admit, I do have my concerns, excuse me. You know, last night, we spent, I don't know, three, four hours talking about budgets, what we could and couldn't afford, and, you know, the one thing that really stuck out to me is when the fire chief got up and asked us to fund or to bank money for our firefighters, for eight firefighters, the body said, nah, you know, we don't want to do that. And to me, this is really a, it's a case of priorities. If we can't afford to spend $400,000 in order to keep eight firefighters, you know, I'm sorry, but I think this is, you know, it may be a good project, but it's the wrong time. You know, we've heard from both our financial boards that they do not approve this, you know, we've heard it said that this won't affect our tax rate. Well, I beg to differ, because, you know, look at free cash as a savings account, you got money in there to spend on, you know, whatever you're going to spend it on in town. I do find it a little bit ironic that last night, this was on the books for 1.1, when, for whatever reason, we decided to deny funding the firefighters, which just happened to be another $400,000, this automatically tonight dropped by 400,000, you know, and I'd really like someone to explain that to me, you know. Where did the extra $400,000 come off of this, and how did we do it? Yes, please.
Mitch Cohen, Select Board Chair. This was really a calculation of using the free cash that honestly I wanted to use for the firefighters, I think everyone here saw me speak in favor of that, town meeting decided otherwise.
Okay, so just for clarity.
Yeah.
What you're telling us is the 400,000 that we didn't spend to support our firefighters were taking, shifting over to this project.
Correct. Well, the town meeting decided to not spend it on that purpose.
I understand, I just want people to understand what was done here.
Yeah, well, that's how we're able to do this without debt.
So, can I, so, you know, really, I look at this, and I think it's a matter of priorities. Personally, I think public safety comes before a very nice park, and again, I think great work has been done here, maybe the right project, but it's the wrong time. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Thank you, Fred. Jeff Knight, 6 Lancaster Drive, and I'm a member of the Appropriations Committee, and had we met after this amendment was made to the Warren article, my vote would still be no, for several reasons, and it's all comes down to timing, not the merit of the project, I actually think Laurie does a fantastic job, and she has a vision that I could never have, so I have a lot of trust and faith in Laurie and the work she does. This is terrible timing, I have all the sympathy in the world for her, but this is, frankly, it is fiscally irresponsible at this point. The committees are working very hard, we, if anyone's been to our, the most recent meetings of all the financial committees, we've agreed to work together in the fall on an economic development plan, we're so fortunate to have Stephanie as a town administrator who is committed not only to staying here, but also to an economic development plan to bring in new business. And I realize that there's an argument to be made that you need something like a streetscape project to entice new business to downtown, but that's not the only place in town to entice new business. And if you notice on the first night of town meeting, Stephanie and Jason showed a slide that showed the much higher impact that economic development from commercial enterprises brings to our budget than any kind of reduction in capital projects and in these line items in our budget that we have right now. Bringing in, and so the strategies we're learning now, we are studying new ways to bring in this type of business, these partnerships, when we start to do that, we'll have more opportunities to distance ourselves from Prop 2.5, because, let me tell you something, when that happens, when we hit that ceiling, it won't be this body deciding to approve that override, it'll be the ballot box, it'll be the other 15,000 residents who aren't able to be here, and if they say no, which they will, because they won't want to pay it, there'll be a catastrophic statutory drop in town services like you've never seen. You don't want to see that, and this is three quarters of a million dollars that we need to save. Whether we borrow it or free cash, it doesn't matter, this is three quarters of a million dollars, and that's why both financial committees are saying, for the love of God, hold on to it. It's not public safety, and it's not education, so hold on to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
George Frankel, Appropriations Committee.
One moment, may I address, there was a motion to move the question, and I want to give the individuals who've been standing in line to speak the opportunity to add to the conversation. Thank you.
George Frankel, 3 Little Pond Road, also a member of the Appropriations Committee. Like Jeff, I would still vote no on this project. It's a $2.1 million project with very little of it funded, future grants, et cetera. I'd like to ask one other question, is the fact that we have just at the last minute changed this article to basically be spending free cash rather than appropriating the ability to borrow, have we lowered the threshold by which this has to pass from two-thirds down to simple majority? Yes. I consider that a very blatant political move to save this project. We've had one of the more contentious town meetings here in the past couple of days than I've ever seen before. We spent four hours on Monday going through basic articles that every year I've been here since I moved here, we've just breezed through, and it's because of the increase in costs. And what we're dealing with is looking at these projects individually, and we're looking at concentrated benefits versus diffuse costs. And just because the costs are diffuse, doesn't mean that they don't come home to roost. And over the last two years, we've burned through $4 million of levy capacity, we spent $4 million of federal ARPA funds, and right now, I really feel our backs are to the wall, and we need to start thinking about this a little bit more carefully. And even now that we've lowered this, I still do not think this should pass. We need to be thinking about the pressure we're going to put on, not just the town's taxpayers, but next year, the pressure we're going to put on the town administrator and our departments and our school board, because we have less and less and less resource to work with, and I don't think we need to do anything to exacerbate that position any more than we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Millie Milton, 50 Thaleen. I have lived in this town for 30 years, and not once have I ever felt like I want to go downtown, because we really don't have a downtown. This project has been 30 years in the making. Five years ago, we started with the master plan, and number one on the goal of the residents for the master plan was downtown, do something about our downtown. I have also concerns about the cost of it, but what I'm really concerned about is what it is costing us not to have a downtown. There's a lot of revenue that is going out of our town, hundreds, maybe even thousands of dollars on a given day to another town. That is revenue generating income that this town could be benefiting from. I just think that we can't afford to not look at that. Our property values would increase if we have a nicer downtown. I think people don't buy property in this town, because we don't have a downtown. I think that this would be a great way to start, a stake in the ground, I think it's one of the only projects that we've put forth, or the warrants that we've put forth, that might actually bring money to our town, rather than cost money.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Norm Corbin, 35 Whitby Street. I've lived here 40 years. Since I've moved in here, the conversation has always been, why is downtown so ugly? I've been listening to that for 40 years, I live a five-minute walk from downtown, I look at this scape, and I think, we need to do something. Blake Street is absolutely the ugliest part of the town right now. I know it's expensive, but I think it's going to draw in business, it's going to make it, just going to improve the community. And, you know, I was on the master plan committee, and as Millie had just mentioned, when we did the master plan back five years ago, the major comment of everybody in the community was, what's wrong with downtown? And I think we need to start, this is to me a starting point to get us going on the right track. It's all about the community, it's about bringing in businesses, I'd like the community and businesses to also find a way to support this somehow. I just think it's the time, we need to do it. It's 40 years for me, 30 years for Millie, anybody else who's lived in this town for a long time recognizes, any of the old timers, old townies, realize that the downtown is not what it used to be, and this is what it used to be, and this is the first step to finally start to fix that problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Kelly Gannett, 69 North Gate Road. Um, I am the chair of the school committee, but I am speaking as a private citizen right now. Um, I have, I just want to recognize that Michael, he did an amazing job to open us off for the night. He spoke elegantly, he spoke passionately, and he did a really great job, and it really made me like reconsider and, and consider this option. It is beautiful. It looks gorgeous. Um, the few questions I have is Fatouche, which is amazing, yummy if you're here, I love your food, um, and Dottie Jeans, are they in support of this as businesses? Because it is, there are businesses that are right there. So I was just curious if, if they were in support of this.
Yes, yeah. So, um, one of the committee members of the focus group is the property manager for 10 and 14 Blake Street, and they are interested in making similar improvements to their, their parking lot. Uh, so we've been discussing, Fatouche wants to do an outdoor seating area, and, uh, they would need to reconfigure their parking area. So we're in discussions, uh, about improvements that they want to make.
Okay, so I'm glad that they wouldn't be put out for this. Um, the other question that Michael made, a great point about parking, and how you're basically just kind of, it sounds like kind of repaving, maybe getting a little bit extras, but not a huge lot. In that back area, could they put a parking garage? Has that been explored to do that? To, you know, maybe not spend the money on the things? Because I know you mentioned that this money goes to the plan that's already in existence, so there's no changes from this point on.
So there's another municipal parking lot that's across from the current fire station. So that was proposed by Weston and Sampson, who did the downtown revitalization plan as a parking garage. Uh, the dollar figure for a parking garage is like 10 to 20 million dollars. Uh, so certainly, you know, this is a 2.1 million dollar project, so if it's, um, not possible to get, uh, $715,000 of town funding for this project, then certainly I will not be going for a parking garage on the other property.
Okay. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to say, this is kind of on behalf of my daughter. She wanted to join me today. They're learning about civics and social studies, so she wanted to do it. On our way here, she asked, when am I going to talk? And I said, well, first they're going to do the town, this Blake Street, and then I'll get up. And so she said, I said, um, they're talking about, you know, 1.1 million, because that was what the thing was originally on that. And she asked me, well, why can't they beautify the schools? Why are they beautifying this? So I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter for that, so I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Thank you. Oh, uh, Brian Cole for Lawrence Street. A couple of quick questions. First, um, Ms. Connors, uh, the grants you mentioned, are those matching, or, uh, if the town does not approve any funds, could we still get, for example, the 500,000 from Complete Streets?
Uh, the Complete Streets grant is not a minimum required match grant. However, they like to see a match. Uh, so the MVP grant does require a match.
Okay.
Uh, so I used the design services as the match for that grant. So we could get both of those grants without these funds, uh, but it would mean, you know, a drastic curtail of the project scope.
Right. Uh, talking of this project scope, my next question is for Chairman Cohen, who I noticed is drinking the town water tonight. Um, uh, we, the total dollar amount of this article has gone down 300, whatever the number is. Do you have a sense of which, what's on the chopping block?
Well, I can tell you.
Yeah.
Um, so the MVP grant, what I applied for, for that was the park improvements and drainage improvements. So what I applied for the Complete Streets grant is the sidewalk improvements at the bike racks, um, and the little walkway that goes through the War Memorial Park.
Right.
So if, uh, if those projects get funded, but the, uh, town appropriation does not get funded, then there will be no reconstruction of the municipal parking lots, and there will be no sidewalk improvements on Blake Street.
Very good. Okay.
I want to make sure that your question was answered properly. I, I heard it as the difference between the 1.1 million and the 750, what got cut out of that. Was that what you were asking, or are you asking what happens if nothing gets funded?
Well, both. I, now, if the MVP grant is, is matching-ish, then that's good to know. But I would also like to know where the 350,000 is coming out of.
So, uh, the difference in the cost from the 1.1 to the, so the 350, of course, we haven't decided at this point what would come off. Um, right now, we're in preliminary design, so we have a long way to go with the design, so.
Gotcha.
You know, we could take off the pergola. That's over $100,000. Uh, so that would be an easy thing to get rid of, uh, but unfortunately, it would make a, a big change to the look of the little park there.
Of course.
Um, uh, other things, like I said, would be the chances are at least one of the sidewalks on Blake.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, microphone B, please.
Hi, Julie Brandon, 22 Sherilyn Drive. Thank you for all the work. It, it does look great, but then there's, you know, wants versus needs, and I feel like this is a want, and if you can get some of the grant money to do some of the improvements now, that would be great. And this, what is it, free cash or whatever it is, there's things coming up for the schools that need to be taken care of, and we could apply that money to those projects instead of increasing the taxes to do those projects. Thanks.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street. Appreciate the previous commenters, because I won't repeat, uh, questions and comments that have already been answered. Um, I did, and that my questions about the grants, I think were answered two questions ago, so thank you for answering that. Um, I, I do get a little bit concerned always when we're counting on grants that aren't guaranteed. Um, and I wonder what will we do if we don't get them. Uh, the second thing I have about grants from anywhere is, it's not really free money. It's our money, just from a different source. Um, but anyway, lay that aside. This is a beautiful project. I don't doubt that one bit. And I was on the fence and not even going to come up and talk until I heard someone say, no tax impact. And I want to speak very briefly about dispelling that myth. Spending free tax, free cash, does have a cash impact, and I will debate anyone who says otherwise. I'll illustrate it right now. Yesterday, we were going to spend $400,000 of free cash on a savings for firefighters. We didn't do that. And as a result, that free cash became available, as we heard someone say, to help fund this one, which the chain reaction of that meant we didn't have to get debt, which would have had a tax impact. Therefore, by not spending the free cash on the firefighters, even if this passes, that had a tax impact. Savings by not having to go into debt in this case. If we don't spend free tax in this case, and I'm not, I'm, really don't have strong feelings on this project, I just want to be clear. I just want to make sure we all have the math right. If we don't spend free tax on this case, it means we have free tax to spend on something else later, which will mean we don't have to tax ourselves as much later, hence a tax impact. I don't want to hear anyone say, free tax is not a tax impact. Um, thank you. One last thing. Yesterday, I said that I moved for the savings on the police project. Um, thanks to our good clerks' great minutes from last year's meeting. I correct myself, because it was our good friend Doug Stone who made that, and I'm sorry for that, but I just wanted to give him the credit for that, uh, good savings. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Mike Shaka, 120 Maynard Street.
Excuse me, one moment. There's a point of order?
Yes. Uh, previously, a motion has been made against a question. I'd like to second that. After everybody under chairs.
And, well, that, now that's exactly what I said. I said, I want to give the people the opportunity that they've been standing there, the opportunity to speak. Wait, wait, one person at a time. I can't hear you all.
Sorry.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, we have now gone through that line, the lady in the blue and the microphone B. Uh, Mr. Shaka rose after you had said the line, and I believe.
No, I was in line.
Oh, no, that's, that's, that is the only person who was not, uh, there when you said you'd give the line.
Okay, I, I will let, I will let them ju, you know, you know, monitor themselves. If you were not in line when I made that statement, I ask you please to sit down.
Mr. Shaka.
I, we, what, 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 why don't we review the tape?
Wait, wait, I can't, I can't hear when everyone's talking.
Okay.
Yes.
Very well.
Mr. Moderator. I'm willing to let everybody speak, but I want this motion to occur before any amendments or other motions are taken.
Understood.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
For those of us who got in line 10 seconds after the people in front of us, is it okay if we have an opportunity to speak, please? It is a rather contentious issue if you haven't figured that out.
Have something new.
Yes, that's, you took the words out of my mouth. Okay, if you have something new to add, I have no problem with you talking, okay?
All right, thanks.
Please.
Again, Michael Shaka, 120 Maynard Street. Uh, first off, Jacob Jones, thank you so much. God bless you. Somebody was listening to the free cash speech that I have been saying over and over again, so thank you for that. Um, regarding this project, a question that I have regarding the amounts, the original amount was $2,177,000 as the final cost, correct?
Uh, I'll have to go back.
Okay, well, take my word for it. So if, um, if, if we're taking $350,000 off, is the new amount, is it adjusted to 1.828?
Uh, so that's, the total cost is still the same. It's still $2,177,000. That's construction cost. That, that's the shortfall that has no funding source as of this point.
Okay, and so for, for those of you that were here, I think it was last night, when I gave the example of the best way to boil a frog slowly, that's what this is, okay? What we're doing is we're kicking the can down the road, which like a crack dealer, we're, we're initially, you know, catching everyone on this free cash, and it's only, you know, $500,000 or whatever it is initially, and then it's still, at the end of the day, the amount's got to come, $2,177,000, at a time that we have a 10% increase. We've been told that it's all but certain that we're going to have 2 and 1/2% overrides. If you looked at the chart that Mr. Little put up the first night, it was essentially a hockey stick. Over the past 10 years, I mean, it was essentially double. Before the end of the decade, those projections are going to probably be about $15,000 for the average tax bill in the town of Massachusetts. Five years goes by like that. Okay, is everyone ready to pay that? I commend, uh, Mr. Rappa for your comments, uh, with regard to, uh, the candor of the committee, as well as the appropriations. If, if the Appropriations Committee and the Finance Committee are making these recommendations, we need to listen to them. This is not the time. I, I'm going to make another point, that you, you had mentioned about bringing businesses in by that beautification. I've got a real spoiler for you. Three of those pictures that you put up, I own those buildings. And the, the one that had the flowers on the shop has been vacant for two years. That, the improvements that were done there.
Are you talking about in Milbury?
Yes, in Milbury.
Okay.
Yes. And those improvements did nothing to add to my tenants.
Well, I have to say it made for a more attractive downtown.
It, it did, absolutely. I think it's beautiful, but I'm, I'm telling you firsthand that, that, so, so I, I'm sure that's a big spoiler alert for you, but, but that's the fact.
Okay, you're at three minutes.
Okay. The, the last point that I'll make is I, I, okay, all right, fine, fine. The, 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 the public sector can never do things as efficient as the private sector.
Microphone A, please.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. Uh, my name is Michael Horgan, 17 Reservoir Street. Um, first off, I just wonder what would happen if I walked into my bank and say, I want some free cash. I'm not sure how that really plays out, but, um, anyways, uh, uh, just a quick note on that, is as I do think things are coming down the, down the line. We're going to lose grants. We're going to lose state funding. Things are happening as we see in the news every day, and, and free, this money that we have, we're going to need for something. Um, I, I've been in this town with, except for a few short stints, my whole life. And yes, downtown is, is ugly, and it's, it's horrible, and right now, it's just a pass through, really, for people to get from 290 over to Route 9, and that's what, that's, that's the fault of other projects that, that happened a long time ago. Um, my concern with this project is I, I don't see the larger vision. I, I hear a lot of talk that it will, you know, if we do this, it will attract businesses, but we really need to present it as that whole plan and the holistic approach. This town makes a lot of decisions. We bought White Cliffs. We bought 4 West Main Street without a clear vision of what was going to happen, and I see this as the same thing. It's just spending money now without a clear vision of, of what's next. Um, one of the things that, from my, my understanding, that's helped, that, that's prevented those redevelopment in downtown in the past is lack of parking. And, and that's always been the case, and I don't see that this is really increasing the parking availability downtown. Uh, the other note, I, I heard a comment earlier that there was some conversation about making sure we have the right ratio of parking there for, for West Main Street, and, and I don't think that's the right approach. We shouldn't be paying for the maintenance and plowing of parking for a, a, a private building. If, if this goes through, or even if it doesn't, I, I want to see some signs on those parking spots to limit the time for one to two hours, so we can have cars cycle through and, and visit the businesses. I think that would help, and having people show up in parking there for eight hours to go into 4 West Main Street to become, uh, just some offices, uh, and, and not available for other people to visit whatever shops we, we might hope to attract. Um, I, I've heard some conversation about downtown should be a walkable downtown, and it's not. And these are, these are mistakes that we've made. We put, we put CVS back off the sidewalk. So if you're on the sidewalk, you've got to walk through a parking lot to get to the business. I want to see zoning to pull those buildings and the development closer to the sidewalks, so people can walk down the sidewalk, go into a building. Parking should be behind these, these buildings, not in front. It's ugly and it's, it's, it's inefficient for the pedestrian vision that we see, uh, that we envision, that we want to have downtown. But I just don't see that, I, I don't really see how spending money on this now really fits into that larger vision. And those are the topics that I want to see presented, is, is the zoning, and what, what are we going to do from our own sort of regulatory approach to, to transform downtown? I, I think we really need to do things along those lines than just putting more grass and fresh sidewalks.
I can, I can address that. Uh, so back in 2010, there was a comprehensive rewrite of the zoning bylaws. So the zoning bylaws already say those things, and they've said those things for the last 15 years. So, uh, it, it does require the buildings to be right up to the sidewalk edge. It does require the parking to be either on the side or the rear of the building.
Okay, and I, I just don't see this presented with that bigger vision of what we look at for downtown.
We only have control over the public realm, so we can't take over private property and demand that they knock down these buildings and redevelop them. That's, that's not the place of municipal government.
That's fine. I, I just don't see this tonight as, uh, presented with, with a long-term vision, and, and because of that, I'm not going to support this.
Thank you. Um, microphone B, please.
Lisa Selly, 13 Maple Street. Um, again, I want to thank all the time and energy that you put in, and Rick put in, and all the MPIC people put in, and the signs they put out, because we would love to see more beautiful downtown. Um, if this doesn't pass tonight, I do hope that we can take the monies that we do have, such as the 30,000 for wayfaring, put signage up, let people know that there is a municipal parking lot, because we've never done that. I'd like to see the striping put back to show people where to park and not across everything, and, um, and maybe work toward even opening up some of that area of taking away some of that pocket park to make some more parking, because I think we really need to get more than 45 parking spaces there. But, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Hi, everybody. Uh, Mike Teigen, 30 Oger Ave. Uh, I'm a member of the Select Board, but I'll be speaking just for myself. Um, you know, I have, and, and I'll be brief. I'm not looking to rehash everything that's been said and, and let these people behind me speak. Um, I have, I have great respect for you, Lori, for Rick, for, for Chairman Cohen. Um, you know, I, I, I just, I just disagree. I, I also think we lose some level of credibility when we came to a town meeting with an article asking for almost a million dollars in debt as a need that became 750. asking for almost a million dollars in debt as a need that became 750. Why wasn't it 750 walking in the door? You know, I, I, I think we, I think we lose some credibility there, unfortunately. We, we've heard from appropriations, we've heard from financial planning. I tried, at our last Select Board meeting a couple weeks ago, to have an official vote from the Select Board. This is the largest article we've had, capital improvement article we've had. My, my colleagues declined to take a vote. So I wanted to stand up here as a member of the Select Board to give you a straight, direct answer, opinion of, of what I think. I am not in support of this article, and I think you should vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone A, again.
Hi, Jack Baxteran, 76 Cedar Hill Road. I can't thank the boards enough for all the work that they've done, and I say that in order to stand in good graces with my wife, who is on the planning committee. So, new information, somebody said I need to say something new. I think if anyone in this room has had the courage to look at-
Please use the microphone.
I'd say if anybody in this room has had the courage to look at their 401K lately, you know that we're in difficult financial times, that the, I'm sorry, that the odds of a recession are anywhere from 30% as projected by JP Morgan, up to 45% from Goldman Sachs. I've also seen 60% from Apollo Investments. These are people who understand what's going on in the world, they're blaming it and recognizing that the cost, that this recession is being driven by the tariffs and the trade wars that are imminent if they are carried out.
Let's go. Keep talking.
It's all relevant to the idea that, the idea of this town not looking at the economic headwinds that we're facing, whether it's a recession, funding from the state, federal, those things, we don't have funding, correct? This is, this is not funded?
Just to clarify, the grants are, are due once a year. They're only available once a year.
Okay.
The deadline for the MVP grant was two weeks ago, and it takes them six months to respond to a grant application. The Complete Streets Grant is actually due tomorrow, I filed it today, and that will take approximately three months to respond. So, this is always the way it is.
Okay.
So, town meeting is always held at this time in April, and the grant rounds are always due in the spring. So there is never going to be a time where I will have grant money in hand going into town meeting. Just wanted to clarify that.
So let's put that into perspective. We know that the state government has built a budget that takes into consideration all of what you just said, the availability of funds, what they have to provide to the towns and cities, and what they have in their, in their budget is enough to cover that, but no more. And it's, certainly, there are contingencies in those budgets that say, if inflation reaches this point, we're going to have to execute contingency plans, whether that's cutting of police, fire, hospital, whatever it may well be, teachers. There's none of that in this budget, none of it. This board has not put together a budget that has contingencies. In 40 years of my experience working in finance and accounting, I have built dozens, hundreds of budgets, and every single one of those budgets, whether I had built it in as a contingency or the corporation had built it in, had contingency. You have to.
I'm sorry, you're at three minutes.
My only point is this, I can't support this. It's a matter of timing, the timing is bad. We're facing economic headwinds that we haven't faced in years.
You all are people of Goldman Sachs, that tell me they're relaxed to be prepared.
Microphone A, please.
Yes. It, it may be helpful for the planning director to respond to the concern as to whether projects from the municipality typically include contingency amounts.
Uh, this project, the construction costs include a 20% contingency.
Okay. Rose, D. Benedetto, 6 Laurel Avenue. Just hearing a lot of things, there's no one in this room that doesn't wanna beautify even their own homes. There's things that have to be put on hold. There's roofs, even in our own house, our driveways, that have to be put off for the next year, okay? And, so, you can't get the curtains, or you can't do the carpeting, 'cause so many other things are, are falling. In the last two nights, there's been major fallings and depreciation on a lot of equipment that I didn't even think we needed, because everything was coming due after 20 years. How many trucks, how many this, how many that? I'm speaking not only as a citizen and a community member here, all right, of Northborough. This whole double town, it's been like that, I'm here 30 years now. It's just the way the town is set up. It's not a Lexington, it's not a Wellesley, where you have one town center.
All those people are coming for the Lord God.
There, it has always been split into two. So, we did a common, which is lovely, I'll be honest with you. I'm back and forth all the time. If I see one person in that common, woo, okay, that's number one. Who's to say that Tommy Lowe, where all of those stores are, are gonna say, "Hey, what about us? We're the second arm or pillow to this town. We need a park down there, too." But let's put that aside, because that's redundant, that's what everybody has said. I heard, school board, eight faculty, not even faculty, was not mentioned faculty, eight, oh, four, sorry, I'm thinking my district, four staff members. That could be someone in the kitchen, that can be an aide, that can be, there's so many pieces to having that school community run every single morning. Wes Boilston, eight classroom teachers, not staff, faculty, Hudson, are going through their major cuts, faculties.
Let's go.
Yes.
She's cut, you've cut.
All of that.
You've got 15.
Those are educators that are being cut, all right? That is what's happening around us. So to look at a million, two, I have to say, it is bizarre that we are living with sunglasses that are just looking forward, because you want a pretty flower pot. The other thing is-
I'm, I'm sorry, you've exceeded your time limit.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
All right, well.
Thank you.
That playground, that playground on 135 was, "Oh, let's build it." We had to fund for that.
We are, we are moving on. Thank you so much. There was a motion, this gentleman over here, to move the question.
Second.
Long ago and far away, yes. So, we have the question, is someone talking? I, I can't hear it. Okay. We have on the floor right now a motion to move the question. It has been seconded. We have voted on those motions in the past couple of days, so it should be pretty straightforward. It is a majority vote, I'm sorry, it's a two-thirds vote for moving the question, and once that happens, we'll know what to do with the next step. Do we have the graphic ready for that one? Okay? So this one is moving the question for Article 29. It requires a two-thirds vote, just as a reminder. The vote, voting is open. It looks like the voting has slowed and come to a stop. May we see the results, please? The motion to move the question passes by the necessary two-thirds vote. Now we move to Article 29. And, and Article 29 is not a two-thirds, it is a majority vote because of the change in the, in the presentation of, of the, the, uh, motion. Is everyone clear on what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay, the voting is open. It looks like the voting has slowed and is not moving. The results. Article, Article 29 does not pass. Before we move on to Article 30, I intended to make an announcement at the beginning of this session, and I, it slipped my mind, but earlier this afternoon, I got an email, and there was a conversation about making a change in two of the articles, that because of travel schedules for individuals that would be part of that presentation, Articles 47 and 51 need, need to be addressed, or it has a very negative impact on a number of other at issues down the road. So I indicated that at the hour of 9:15, if we have not gotten to Article 47 or Article 51, that we would take a timeout and move those articles forward, have the presentations for Article 41 and for Article 57, not simultaneously, but the two articles, and we can go through that, and then return to our regular numbered article. Yes?
We'll have to lock in the vote on Article 29.
Would you like to reconsider that?
Move to reconsider.
There's the second, okay. And we all know what reconsideration is? We're locking the vote in? It is counterintuitive. If you wanna reconsider this and have more discussion about the article, then it is a no vote. If you do not want anymore, um, the other way around, I'm sorry. It's a yes vote if you do not want this discussed anymore, okay? It's a no vote.
No.
What did I just say wrong?
A yes vote is to reconsider.
My mind was thinking, my mouth wasn't. A no vote means that it, it cannot be reconsidered at any other time for the length of this particular town meeting. A yes vote says it may be considered at any time during this particular town meeting, and that includes any sessions after this evening. Have I confused you, or are we clear?
Clear.
Thank you. Do we have the graphic? There we are. Okay, perfect. The voting to reconsider Article 29 is now open. It looks like everything has slowed down, so, oh, now there are the final 10. Okay, let's look at the results. The motion to reconsider Article 29 does not pass. Article 30.
Good evening. I swear she's not here to guilt anybody into voting a certain way. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $75,500 to upgrade, sorry, for upgrades to the one-fifth of the classrooms at the K through 8 Northborough schools, including all costs incidental and related thereto, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in fiscal year 2025.
The motion has been made and seconded.
And Becky Pellegrino is gonna present tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So the district has developed a five-year plan to replace outdated classroom presentation, presentation systems, which are essential instructional tools for teachers. You can see the picture that is shown above is actually a classroom that can be found in Melican Middle School right now. Most of these current systems are over 10 years old, well beyond their expected lifespan, and are increasingly prone to failure. These systems vary widely across classrooms and schools, with many consisting of projectors on rolling carts that are connected via extension cords. The plan will standardize classroom technology across the district and introduce new and more efficient, modern equipment. In the first year, new systems will be installed in 25 Grade 7 and 8 classrooms at Melican Middle School. Subsequent phases of the plan include Year 2, Melican Grade 6 classrooms, Year 3, Proctor, Year 4, Z, and then Year 5, Lincoln Street. We are currently evaluating replacement options, which include either wall-mounted projectors or interactive touch panel display systems, and the estimated cost per classroom is $3,000. And I welcome any questions on this proposal.
Thank you. Before we have questions, we'd like to get an opinion on the part of the pre-K through 12, through 8 school committee. Is there anyone here from there?
We vote unanimously in favor of this article.
Yeah, I hear from appropriations, please.
Mr. Chairman, the appropriations committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 30.
Thank you. And financial planning?
The financial planning committee unanimously voted to recommend approval of this Article 30.
Thank you. We have discussion debate, and I'm gonna start with microphone B.
Thank you. His illustrious Holy Royal Majesty, Michael A. Leonard and Associates, 900 Brook Road. Listen, this is a question of values, okay? And values cannot be measured using a mathematical equation. It's very, very sad, okay, when we put our money in the technology, right, in all the things, okay? And yet, see, the, the financial systems that be, okay, wanna keep, continue to increase the funding of administration, of security, of all these unnecessary fancy gadgets and gizmos, but we don't fund physical production, we don't fund our teachers, our teachers are lacking decision-making because of all the standardized testing, all the stuff that turns man into a robot, okay? Our teachers lack the freedom to teach what they teach because of the over-administration, which is a product of an infinite regress of the financial sectors of, of society, funding this equipment and having debt service. And it just shows you where our value systems are, that, you know, we argue about, yes, we need more, the firefighters need more money, the, the personal firefighters, they need better salaries, the teachers need greater salaries, absolutely. The, the, the financial system uses the dialectics to divide and conquer us, having us fight more wages for fire, we need parks, we need more parks, we need more workers, we need the people to stop doing these clerical jobs, which are draining to their mental health, and it is, right? And get out and actually do physical labor and contribute to build things, which is in their inherent artistic creativity, okay? So the issue, okay, here is that we're trusting in this technology to educate our children, right? And it, it's totally unnecessary, but we don't spend money for the things that we do need, building actual housing, building things that can house a big business, building fruit trees and local production, okay? And trusting in international corporations to, because of planned obsolescence, right? They create these devices that are all flashy, have all these gadgets, and they need more and more technical, technical experts to, to, to do this, okay? And that's where we're putting our money on, creating more technical jobs, and man is more and more miserable, because he doesn't have his inherent creativity to go and build things and do them themselves. Why can't the teachers, the kids, paint the rooms, put things there? Why can't the teachers, the kids, paint the rooms, put things there, and do actual physical labor?
You have 20 seconds.
Thank you. I have a bunch of things. That's all I have to say. So down with the financials. Let's get rid of the finance and insurance, and if I become administrator of town, I will revoke all debts. I will cancel all debts. Let's create a public bank. Wall Street cannot kick anybody out of their homes, they can't enforce it, and they know it. So it's all just arbitrary and fake. So down with Wall Street. Down with Wall Street. Down with the financial sector, and then we can debate public property, we can debate all that stuff. We can fund the teachers, we can fund the firefighters. Down with the administration, down with Wall Street.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Mr. Moderator, Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street. As hopefully we know, I don't like spending our money. That said, without reservation, I support Article... What number we're on?
30.
Without reservation, I have three children who are in K-8 here, and one who's going to be in kindergarten next year. I've seen what the school does with their resources, and I do not have any reason to think that they're wasting our money with investments like this. These are good investments, I appreciate them. I would hope that if any equipment is being replaced and disposed of that still has any life left to it, maybe we can find good ways to dispose of it, donate to charities or something so it doesn't end up in a landfill if it's still working, and that sort of thing, which I'm sure will do. And just for... So I don't have to get up here again. The other school things that are coming up on stairs and things, I support them too, so I won't get up again. Thanks.
Thank you. Hearing no more discussion or debate, I think we're prepared to vote on Article 30. Looks like we are ready to see the results. Article 30 passes by the majority vote.
Thank you.
Article 31, please.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $60,000 for the repair and replacement of a portion of the playgrounds at Fannie E. Proctor Elementary School, Marion E. Z. School, and Lincoln Street School, including all costs incidentals and related thereto, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025.
The motion has been made and seconded. Presentation will be by?
Becky. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So last summer, we did have a certified independent third-party inspector come out to all four elementary schools to inspect all of our playgrounds. This inspection revealed damaged, rusted equipment in areas that are not in compliance with current playground safety standards. The three schools that we will be focusing these funds on are Proctor Elementary, the Z School, and also Lincoln Street School. The Proctor Elementary School's play structure is nearly 30 years old, and it is in most need of repair. We will be targeting replacement of the non-compliance sections and not doing a full replacement, and the estimated cost for repairs at Proctor is $45,000. For Z and Lincoln Street, the remaining 15 funds will be allocated amongst those two schools, again, to repair and replace any worn, broken, or rusted equipment.
Thank you. May I hear from the school committee on Article 31?
The school committee unanimously supports this article.
Thank you. And financial planning?
Financial planning committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 31.
And the appropriations committee?
Appropriations committee also unanimously recommended approval of Article 31.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate on Article 31? Hearing none, I think we are prepared to vote, and the voting is open. Has everyone voted? Let's see the results, please. Article 31 passes by the majority vote.
Thank you.
Article 32, please.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $105,000 for the repair of the retaining walls and the replacement of two exterior staircases at the Fannie E. Proctor Elementary School, including all costs incidentals and related thereto, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025.
I heard a second. Thank you.
And Becky Pellegrino will make the presentation.
Thank you.
The existing retaining wall system and stairwell are both original to Proctor's renovation in 1998, and these have significantly deteriorated and are well beyond repair. The current railroad tie system for the retaining wall is rotting and poses safety concerns. We plan to demolish the existing wall system and install a new Versa-Lock-type retaining wall system, and also to install new concrete stairs. The existing handrails will be removed, cleaned, and painted, and reinstalled on the new
Thank you. Any discussion or debate on Article 32? Hearing none, are we prepared to vote?
The schools committee supports this article.
Oh, I didn't ask you, did I? Sorry. It looks like the voting has ended. And the results, please. Article 32 passes by the required majority vote.
Thank you so much.
Article 33.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $50,000 for the replacement of two exterior staircases at the Marion E. Z. Elementary School, including all costs incidentals and related thereto, to be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025. Becky Pellegrino will make the presentation.
I'll second it.
I heard the second.
This project will replace two original staircases at the Z School. They are located at the side entrance near the parking lot, and there is also one at the loading dock. The stairs have undergone multiple repairs over the previous years, but are now beyond repair due to advanced deterioration. The scope of this project will include a complete replacement of both staircases, and it will also include engineering service to develop the plans and specifications for
So I did not ask the school committee, you were giving your opinion?
The school committee unanimously supports this article.
And appropriations?
Appropriations committee unanimously recommended approval of Article 30...
And financial planning, please.
Financial planning unanimously recommends approval of this Article 33.
The vote is up for Article 33. And it looks like the voting has slowed or ended. And Article 33 has passed by the majority vote.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Frank is going to read Article 34.
Article 34. And your name is Joan Frank, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Joan G. Frank. If you wanted the right one. Gala, maiden name. Joan Frank, 420 Whitney Street, member of the Northborough School Committee and the Regional. I have a long one, so I have a marker, so I'll lose my place. I move the town of Northborough appropriate the amount of $100,000 for the purpose of paying cost of owner project management services and schematic design services for the Marion E. Z. Elementary School roof replacement project at 33 Howard Street, Northborough, for feasibility and schematic design services, including the pavement... payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the town of Northborough has applied for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amon to be expended under the direction of Northborough K-8 School Committee. To meet this appropriation, the sum of $100,000 be transferred from free cash to be available for expenditure in FY 2025. The town of Northborough acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and if the MSBA's Board of Directors votes to invite the town to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, any project cost the town of Northborough incurs in excess of any grant that may be approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Northborough. And that, if invited to collaborate with the MSBA on the proposed repair project, the amount of funding authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Northborough and the MSBA.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Now you know why I had her read it.
Reading teacher, I should be able to read that.
And the presentation will be by?
Becky Pellegrino.
Thank you.
Who is Assistant Superintendent of Finance for the Northborough and Southborough Schools. Thank you, Becky.
So as of January 2nd, 2025, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, also known as the MSBA, invited the town of Northborough into its accelerated repair program. This program provides school districts with funding to perform energy-efficient and cost-saving repairs. The school's roof must be at least 25 years or more in order to qualify for the accelerated repair program. The Z roof is 58,250 square feet and is original to the 1998 renovation. The school is experiencing leaks due to many roof deficiencies, including failed seams, perimeter flashings, open flashing conditions, wet insulation, ponding water, and debris and vegetation. There are multiple sections of this roof. The main area is a ballasted EPDM roof, and the remaining four sections are asphalt shingles. The $100,000 requested tonight will fund a feasibility and schematic design study for a potential roof replacement project. The town will conduct a study in partnership with the MSBA and the town's assigned owner's project manager and designer to find the most fiscally responsible, educationally appropriate, and sustainable solution. This project will ultimately be brought to next year's town meeting for approval. The MSBA will reimburse the town of Northborough for a portion of the design study cost and the roof replacement. Our estimated reimbursement rate is between 45% to 50%. The school district extends its sincerest thanks to the town of Northborough for supporting the replacement of the Proctor roof through ARPA funds. Due to that new roof, the Proctor School and also Lincoln Street School added solar panels to their roofs last summer. With a roof replacement, the Z School is also suitable for solar panels, and these efforts will ultimately help to reduce the utility costs for these three schools. And I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Before we have questions, I would like the opinion on the part of the school committee, please.
The Northborough School Committee unanimously supports this article.
Thank you. And may I hear from the appropriations committee, please?
Appropriations. The appropriations committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 34.
And financial planning?
Financial planning unanimously recommended approval of Article 34.
Thank you. And we have discussion or debate. Microphone A?
Rob Berger, 46 Washburn Street. One quick question. The original roof that went in in 1998, did it come with a warranty? And is there any life left on that warranty, if it exists?
There was a warranty, but there is no longer any warranty left.
Thank you. And microphone B, please.
Michael Shaka, 120 Maynard Street. So, one of my favorite topics, feasibility studies. I appreciate the fact that there's a possibility of a 45% to 50% reimbursement of the study. What kind of guarantee would... is there, if any, that there's even the possibility of any reimbursement at all on that? First question.
When we enter into a project funding agreement with the MSBA, we will be guaranteed they will set the actual amount. This happened with Lincoln Street School, where we were able to secure, I think it was 44% reimbursement on that project. The feasibility study would be reimbursed at whatever grant amount would be set by MSBA, and once it has been locked in, we're actually secured that funding. The MSBA does receive their funds through the state legislature, so once those funds are set aside for this project, we would be guaranteed those funds.
Okay, so post-study, you submit, and then you find out?
And the study is required by MSBA, so that is part of this process.
Okay. Is it essentially an RFP? Or...
For this study?
Yeah, I mean, it's called a study, but, I mean, is the study essentially an RFP?
No, so what will happen is the MSBA will assign us with an owner's project manager and also a designer, and we will work with them to look at all the conditions, the current conditions, and to come up with a plan and put together the bid specifications for us so that we would have a good cost estimate for the roof project.
So how does that differ from an RFP?
An RFP would be a request for proposals. We're not going out for a request for proposals. The MSBA will assign us with one of their approved OPMs.
So would it be possible to have an RFP requesting a quote, essentially, which would be inclusive of a design? So you'd have the schematic, you'd have the... You're kind of getting that, and I don't know if that would qualify you for the grant or not.
It would not, because we would need to... We do need to follow their process, and so this is what is stipulated.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Microphone B, please.
Bryce McKnight, 9 Longfellow Road. Becky, can you talk about some of the dynamics that are required that you would otherwise maybe not do in another setting that you have to in order for us to get state funding?
Sure, I think that the biggest thing would be... We would have to work with MSBA. It's a longer process for us to go through, but I think it's a very thoughtful process. They do have us look at all the different scenarios and weigh out the pros and cons to the different costs and the different types of roofing structures that we would be putting in place. be putting in place. I think really the timing is probably the biggest difference, where they are leading that work, and we would not be going out. Normally, if we were to do this on our own, we would probably go out for our own request for services, where we would assign the designer, but they're going to assign us with a designer and an OPM that has already been bedded by the state and has already been approved.
Thank you. I think it's important for us to just kind of understand those differences for the folks of us who aren't, like, kind of immersed in this work ourselves, that in order for us to be applicable for certain monies, we are then restricted to the processes of those groups who distribute the monies. Thank you.
Thank you. And microphone A, please.
Yeah, I just had a question.
Name and address, and address.
Oh, sorry. Doug Stone, thirty-three Burchell Road. I just wondered, like, for the previous article, does that involve prevailing wage?
Yes, it will.
Is there a limit, like, under which we can avoid that?
In Massachusetts procurement for any type of municipal construction, prevailing wage is required.
So even if it was twenty thousand, it's still?
There's no, there's no limit when it comes to building construction.
Okay. And that's, again, folks, why we're constrained with these expenditures. You need to talk to your state legislators and governor to, to lower the prevailing wages, because we're, we're constrained.
Thank you. Hearing no more debate or discussion, we're prepared to vote on Article thirty-four. This is, the vote is open. It is a majority vote. And it looks like the voting is complete. Article thirty-four passes by the majority vote.
Thank you so much.
Article thirty-five. Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars for the Northborough Affordable Housing to, I'm sorry, eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand for the Northborough Housing Authority to construct eight affordable, low-income, one-bedroom rental units for veterans, including four first-floor handicap-accessible units at twenty-six Village Drive, with said funds to be allocated as follows. Three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, seven-twenty-seven from the Community Preservation Fund revenues, two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars from the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve Fund, and two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, four-hundred-and-ten dollars from the Community Preservation Unreserved Fund. The disbursement and expenditure of these funds shall be subject to a Community Preservation Act funding agreement between the town and the Northborough Housing Authority.
Second.
Folks, a quick point of clarification. The motion I read differs from the motion in your packets, because there was a typo in the source of funds for each of the three allocations. Lines one and three were reversed in their terms. The amount stays the same. Just wanted to be clear on that.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm John Campbell, and I come before you representing our Community Preservation Committee, and I'd like to start by offering my congratulations and gratitude. This year marks twenty years of CPA in the town of Northborough, during which time we've accumulated three million, four-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, one-hundred-and-forty dollars in state matching funds. So, thank you. So your one-point-five percent has gained an average thirty-five percent return on each dollar that we put in. Not a bad investment. The CPC, I should say, the CPA was created to give towns a unique resource to help preserve open space, create more recreational opportunities for affordable housing creation and for historic preservation. Each year, the CPC evaluates applications that are brought to it, and we make recommendations based on criteria of level of community support, the urgency to fund it in this given year, and affordability within the budget of the CPA reserves and the CPA revenues. We must spend the money in at least ten percent proportions on those three core categories, but we can then spread it around those three as we see fit. If you were to approve all of the six CPA articles that I'll present tonight, and I hope that you will, we would still have over three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand in reserves in the CPA Unreserved Fund. That's kind of like the savings account that is not yet allocated, and that'll be supplemented by an additional state match, which tends to come in November of every year. So I want to make clear that all of the CPA articles presented here can be funded from the reserves and the revenues that we have. There will be no additional use of free cash. There will be no additional impact on your taxes, no additional impact on the other budgets of the town. So it's the beauty of the CPA funds that we've been able to utilize in Northborough, that we make great use of them for a number of resources without impacting any or other other core needs in town. I like to put up this graphic each year to highlight the great things that we've achieved in town with our CPA revenues and CPA reserves. As you can see, the majority has been in the green in open space and preservation, town common, the many trails and networks, additional conservation land that we've created, enhancing our parks, pickleball courts, et cetera, and it's all great. But we're underserving the blue pie in the chart in affordable housing. And that's where I come to you tonight in support of Article thirty-five. Article thirty-five is asking for eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand in CPA funds, and as the warrant read, this is supported by new revenue, the existing Affordable Housing Reserve, and a portion of our unreserved savings. These would construct eight low-income apartments, and as they say, they will be specified for veterans and disabled veterans in town. The project will cost approximately two million, eighty thousand, with the additional one-point-two to be funded by three-hundred thousand in the Housing Authority's reserves and nine-hundred thousand in state grants, and this is, has been, the opportunity for these grants was created by the Affordable Homes Act passed in state last fall. Five-point-five billion, five-point-one billion for creating housing and a large portion of it dedicated to public housing for affordable housing. All the units will be of an architectural design that will blend with the existing buildings at Colonial Village. All of the building and associated improvements will go through our normal permitting process through the zoning board of appeals via a comprehensive permit. And the Housing Authority will be subject to a funding agreement to ensure the satisfactory completion of the project, just like any other CPA fund that the town votes to a non-town department. We have a funding agreement to make sure that it's implemented. Just so you know, and this will follow for any other CPA article, should the project not be able to be completed in the way that it's voted, should it have to be postponed? It sometimes happens. Those funds come back into the CPA reserve, so they are not, you know, just given to that entity. They must demonstrate completion of the project. At this point, I'd like to also highlight the two main goals that this satisfies in our town. One is the growing need for affordable housing that does not get any better each year. Secondly, it's very important to point out that this addition of affordable housing will keep us above the requirement for forty-B. If our affordable housing percentage in Northborough drops below ten percent, we may be forced to accept housing developments that are unfavorable in terms of their size and location. You know, picture large apartment complexes that we may not have control over. Currently, the town is considered to have ten-point-two-eight percent of its housing stock affordable. However, that percentage will decline to just above ten percent, very close to being below it, if all of the market-rate units that are currently under construction or have been approved for future constructing are constructed. If more come on board, then we'll easily drop below ten percent. So by approving these eight units, we'll get back up to ten-point-one-six, still not too much above ten percent, but a much more comfortable buffer. At this point, I'd like to introduce our Housing Authority Director, Ron Bonney, to help with further comments and details.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Northborough. I'll try to be as brief as possible, but answer any questions that come up. The, the only difference on what they're showing on the slide is we would probably angle the building a little more to maximize the space behind it, to kind of increase the twenty-five-foot setback, and the reason why we would angle it would be to allow a firetruck to be able to swing behind it if necessary, God forbid. And we would also probably over to the left, when you're looking at it, over to the left near where you see the red tree, we would add a secondary dumpster over there. That, we have one on the extreme other end of the property that would put one on this end of the property to allow the tenants to travel a little less to be able to disperse their trash. Currently, we have about four-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred veterans in Northborough. The Veteran Service Agent tells me it's closer to five-hundred right now. I'm going by the last census that you had. Our current waitlist for one-bedroom apartments is at nine-thousand-sixty-four. Veterans on that one-bedroom list make up seventy-one people. That's Northborough local veterans. For veterans in neighboring communities, I'm talking the communities that are adjacent to Northborough, there's eighty-nine additional veterans. And then when you get to a ten-mile-square area around Northborough, there's two-hundred-and-fifty-four veterans on the list. Our entire list for everything is twenty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-one when I left the office today. So the amount of people waiting for affordable housing is massive. The, so if, if you, like me, want to help veterans, you know, I'm not sure how many veterans are here tonight, but a lot of people, there's not a lot of people that line up saying, "I want to live in affordable housing when I get older." A lot of people do it because it's a need. They do it because, whether it's, you know, spouse passed away, they have to give up the house, sometimes a parent is aging in place, and the Housing Authority is a lot more conducive arrangement for them. I mean, we, we wish that we could build, you know, a fifty-unit building. It's not available on the campus. All right. Thank you. Everyone in town wants to see how veterans taken care of. No, no one more than myself. Every male in my family has served that's over twenty-one years old. I did twenty-two years. My son is in, you know, it's just something that our family is passionate about. And we have a number of veterans that already live in our public housing, and I'd like to see more. We have had some homeless veterans in Northborough that I worked with a Veteran Service Agent to be able to get him into public housing. And it turned out that, that the day he got the offer from us, he also got several other offers. One was in a brand-new building, so we chose to do that, but before that, he was living in the Walmart parking lot. That should not be the case. We should never have that. Just my opinion. So if anybody has any questions, let me know.
Before we do questions, I would like the opinions of the appropriations committee, please.
Mr. Moderator, the appropriations committee voted in the majority to recommend approval of Article thirty-five.
And the financial planning committee, please.
Financial planning by a majority recommended approval of this Article thirty-five.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Just wanted to add a couple of words before the question.
Sure.
I just want to clarify the article you're voting on. This is to approve the recommendation of your Community Preservation Committee for the allocation of money from our reserves for one of the three core areas for which we're able to use CPA money. It does not approve all aspects of the building project. That's going to go through the normal process in town, as we stated earlier, normal permitting process. There will be adequate time for folks to comment during that phase. What you're approving tonight is that this is a good use of CPA funds and that it's available in our reserves, and, again, not taxing any of our other revenue sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Yes, Gib Chase from Juniper Brook Development. As I understand it, the building cost estimated at just two or three million dollars, half of that, the town is responsible for payment, is that correct?
No, sir. The town is only responsible for the eight, the town is only responsible for the eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars.
Okay, but we're responsible?
And that's all coming from the CPA funds, as John indicated earlier.
But we are responsible for that portion.
That money is already in your CPA money. That's no additional tax money. That's no additional fees or anything.
The existing unit, I'm, you know, the complex up there I'm familiar with, I think that was all purchased back in sixty-eight, and what do you got, about nine buildings in there now? You've got a limited parking area. I don't think, I think you're supposed to have seventy-two. There's only fifty-six. This new building would add another sixty-four parking areas, which I'm not sure where you put them. And also, isn't this a landlocked area in there?
The building itself would have a pathway up to it and around it.
What do you mean, a pathway?
A pathway large enough for, say, an ambulance or a firetruck to be able to get around behind the building.
Coming in from where, Summer Street?
Coming in from our parking lot.
From where?
From our parking lot.
Yeah, from Summer Street.
You would be able to get around the building just like you can on the rest of the entire campus.
Those are pretty narrow. So, so there's, there's no, there's no entrance from the library side of?
No, sir, and, and we do not use the library's parking lot. I saw the flyer that was passed out.
But I think, I think you're supposed to, according to the building rules now, you're supposed to be adding about sixty-four more new parking spaces in there, or at least that's what they require?
No, sir. The Housing Authorities are governed by chapter one-twenty-one. We're not governed by some of the ones that are on this sheet, because the sheet that was passed out also says that we don't pay any property taxes. We do not pay property taxes. Housing Authorities, like any state entity, we pay pilot money, payment in lieu of taxes, which amounts to fifty percent of your tax bill plus a hundred dollars per bedroom. So we, we pay a different fee structure.
I'm not going through the tax situation. I'm looking at the, at the physical boundaries of the site and what it can accommodate. It's pretty, it's pretty crowded in there now.
I'm sorry, you have fifteen seconds.
I, I went by there Saturday night. There was a, at midnight, actually, twelve-thirty. There was twelve empty.
Given the, given the limited time here to go over something like this, then it may be better to pass this over and, and have a chance to, to meet and go over. to pass this over and have a chance to meet and go over in more detail a little bit on how all of this is going to fit in there and how it's going to be accommodated, you know.
Microphone B, please.
Bonnie Strickland, 37 Hamilton Road. It was a design question. I also have a friend that lives there and was concerned about having more handicap parking. So I just want to make sure that was included in the design.
Yes, ma'am. The current design would include, and we are making improvements on the design all the time. You know, every time, I know a lot of architects and engineers. I used to be a builder, so every time they come down to my place on the Cape and they want a beer and a hot dog, the requirement is you take a look at my plans. And the current plan calls for an additional 20 parking spots. We also, because we had a couple of sick trees, we took down a couple of trees, that's going to allow another five parking spots. A number of them will be handicap spots.
Where are these extra spots going to be? Is that more to the front of the entrance?
Well, by angling those spots, if you look at the top, there's the number three in there. Then on the side, there's a number... One second.
I do know that there is a big opening between those two buildings.
Right up...
Okay, so you're going to put them there?
Right up here, there's number three.
Yeah.
On the side, I believe it's four. There's six there, four there. This one here, we're actually going to move those to the other side. There's additional three here. We will angle all of this parking. That adds approximately four to five additional spots. Down here, we remove the tree that's in this picture. That allows us to add five additional spots.
Okay.
So the aggregate is about 25 spots if we increase the number of handicap spots. Right now, there is a handicap spot for everyone, every tenant that has notified us that they have a handicap placard. This will include several handicap guest spots, because sometimes the folks that come over have that. You know, the typical flow in the day, when I went over there Saturday night, last night, and the night before, there were anywhere from 11 to seven empty spots. Unfortunately, where a lot of our tenants are... Okay, I'm going the wrong way here. A lot of our tenants live up here. That's part of why we want to angle this end here, because right at that end of the lot, before adding any spots, that is the tightest congestion. The lot that is down here, there were about seven spots open there last night, and that was after our meeting here and after talking to a couple of people, so that was about midnight.
It is more busy during the day, which is usually when I visit, but...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, microphone B, please.
Hi, Rebecca Foley-Mohopolis, 6 Mohican Avenue. I'm very familiar with this community. I have a family member that lives there, and I visit her almost every day. I actually, it's a wonderful community. I actually just led a chair yoga class for a group of seniors in the community center. It was wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes, we had a lot of fun. I am wondering, and I believe there is a need for affordable housing here in Northborough and in our state. I know there's a long list of people who want to get in. However, I know there are a few vacant apartments because they're on the second floor and there's no handicap accessibility to the second floor. So I'm wondering if there was any consideration for handicap accessible apartments for the whole unit, being that you're going to be building it, because you already have two empty apartments, and I know there's a long list, so just for thinking about that.
We do. The end of the list for us, for the people that are capable of doing the second floor, is about 8,000 people that are on it. So the only reason those are not, haven't been filled immediately is because there were some maintenance issues there. We are doing five roofs in the complex.
Okay.
We're also doing major electrical upgrades.
Okay.
And unfortunately, two of those apartments happen to be the hub where a lot of the electrical stuff is right behind it.
Okay.
So I didn't want to put a tenant in there and then immediately be tearing their ceiling out and opening their walls up.
Okay.
It's not a very welcome, you know, "Welcome to Northborough Housing."
Right.
By the way, we're going to remove your wall.
Okay.
That, we were trying to prevent that.
Okay, so it's not because you don't have anyone to fill that they can't walk up the stairs, because...
No, the list is so long.
Okay.
And we're actually required to take 13.5% young and disabled folks, so, you know, they are typically more able to make it to the second floor.
Okay. And then the other question is, are you, do you have a plan of where you're going to? I know it seems minor, but I know that there is a group of people that have a garden and they take care of it over there. Do you, is there a plan for where the garden would go?
Well, the garden originally was...
Right, right there.
There's a brand-new garden over here. It was actually done by a local veteran contractor.
Oh, okay. All right, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But thank you. There's still one spot left in the garden if whoever you're going to visit wants it. There's one open spot.
Okay, thank you, I'll let her know.
Going up for auction now.
Back to microphone B, please.
Thank you. Kathleen Howland, 20 School Street, I'm in the butter. Spent a lot of time walking through the property, and I'm glad to see that some of our funds are being oriented to our elders, because I do love them and I ache that they can't walk from behind Trinity downtown because there are no sidewalks from that, low-income housing. And I've always thought that Colonial Village just screamed "low income." There's nothing, and in fact, the denuding in the last year of trees has been breathtaking. I think, I don't understand why that garden was put up the way it was. It looks like a cage. And then there's like a screen of trees between that and the parking lot, as if gardening isn't something to celebrate. I envision that the greenhouse, that is such an asset in the community house, be used. I think the property, just tons of money has been spent to take down trees and nothing to imbue it with green, when all of the research in this type of work, and I hate people who will say there's research, I will offer the studies from Chicago Housing Authority and everything, that the more green, the better the health outcomes for people, the decreased stress and the decreased loneliness that Vivek Murthy, our Surgeon General, described as a pandemic, especially for people who live alone, which is exactly that. I find it sad. People tell me that they feel isolated. There's nothing about, that's community. So now I see you're going to take out the gazebo for parking in that tree that's there, is that correct?
No.
Where's the gazebo?
We're moving it to the other side to preserve the gazebo and the table where people sit.
Okay, I never see people there. I've never, aside from the two guys that played guitar for a while, but I walk a dog through there a couple, three times a day. I just would love to see something that calls people to come together, and there's precious little. I would like to know what the environment, the plan is to re-tree, to replant, and to do something that's aesthetically pleasing, because that will always make the buildings look far lovelier.
Depending on which study you're talking about from Chicago, my wife's actually one of the authors of one of those studies.
The Chicago Housing Authority?
Yes, ma'am. So the trees that you spoke of that are behind the garden was the first step. We only have, we have limited budgets, so at the end of the year, we look at what can we spend our, whatever is left in the budget. And the trees that were added behind the garden is us trying to re-tree the trees that we took down. We had a lot of sick trees. We had a lot of trees that were invasive species.
We had a lot of beautiful trees as well.
And most of them were invasive sumac, so not something we wanted to preserve.
Your own tree people told me that, around the maples that were taken down. So, you know, we can look at that, but please try to explain why the screen of trees, the monoculture that is on the backside. I don't want to belabor it, I just believe that they deserve something lovelier.
Well, we added, I think, very nice trees. I have those same trees in my yard, in both of my yards. And that was mostly also to stop when people park in the parking lot that's right next door to that.
I've got to watch.
The exhaust from their cars was carrying over to the garden. So we put the trees as kind of a buffer. And as our budget allows, we're going to re-tree a lot of the rest of the property. Some of it we're holding off on because we want to do this, the building and the parking lot project, because a lot of that is, we're going to try to increase the walkability around the development to have people be able to get out and about. And there's a shuffleboard court in the back near the benches that we just ran out of time last year to redo, because we want to redo the benches and we want to redo that little shuffleboard lane that's there. But we need to see if this is funded, and we also need to check if, with the Fire Department, going to put you on the spot, chief, to see if they're going to need us. We may need to put a gate in the back in case they ever do have to enter from the library parking lot into the back of our development. We may put one of those, what's the name of the gate that you can open and close of the Fire Department shoes? But anyways, to put that, that may affect where we can put those benches and stuff like that.
I'm sorry, you've exceeded your time limit.
I just want to put a stake in the ground for quality of life.
Sure. Come by and talk to us sometime.
Microphone A, please.
Hi, my name is Rick Leaf, 30 Wiles Farm Road. I'm on the board of the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. Some of you are probably aware that we've been working for a number of years in town to create small affordable housing projects. We collaborated with the Housing Authority on this project, reviewed the plan, felt comfortable that the way the project was being developed would meet the needs of the veterans on the waiting list, would also adequately address parking and design issues on the property. The placement of the building was appropriate for the lot, kind of thing. We also always look at, for any new affordable housing project, what is a demonstrated need for the housing? And there's no doubt that there are a large number of veterans looking for this kind of housing, and veterans who either work in or live in the town of Northborough are looking for this kind of housing. So purely from a need of addressing a need, we felt this project was appropriate. We also are very concerned about the town continually slipping closer and closer to an overall 10% affordable percentage. And as was mentioned at the presentation for this article, with all of the new market rate housing either recently completed or under construction or approved of construction, including an 88-unit project on King Street that will fall perilously close to 10%, and these eight units are a way to offset some of that new development to keep us above 10%. If in fact we fall below that number, we could be subject to another project the size of an Avalon Bay, which would drive a large amount of new residential housing in town, which creates a whole new need for services in town to support that. So our mission has always been to slowly create small amounts of affordable housing over time to keep us over 10%, not put a great demand on town services, and we feel this project, both in terms of the audience it's going to try and serve, and the benefit to the town of Northborough to keep us above 10% is worthwhile, so we recommend approval of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Microphone B, please.
Hi, Susie Sislka, 8 Emerson Road. Just to respond, King Street hasn't started yet or even broke ground, so I know that was a lot of fire and brimstone, so I just want to let everybody know, we're not perilously close yet. I'm on the ZBA, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the ZBA right now. I did have some questions on the design, that's why I'm up here, but he brought that up. So Chief Parenti is going to be looped in on a lot of this design, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Because I have a lot of concerns about, like, the fire trucks and the fire safety being able to get to the back building, especially since it's going to be especially for disabled veterans, like I have. And if they're going to be on the second floor, and I know disabilities come in all shapes and sizes, and some will be way more able than others, but I have a lot of concerns about them getting back there and even being able to transverse the walkway and everything. So I just wanted to make sure he's going to be involved in the design before it comes to any of the boards.
I learned a long time ago never to get in the way of the Fire Department.
So, thank you, chief. You'll be involved, okay. And then my other question was, I think it's a little turned from the picture that I had been looking at. Can you, the library is where the new building is?
Library is right about here.
Okay, so you said that there might be a, like a gateway. Where will all the construction vehicles be parked when the building's going on?
Probably right around here. The quick thing about this project is it's a modular project.
Oh, okay.
So they would come in, pour the foundation...
Yeah.
Connect any sewer, electrical, things like that.
Uh-huh.
And the rest is, they just bring it in and stack it up.
Okay.
It's two levels, boom, boom. It comes in about eight pieces, because each level is four pieces. They stack it up, then they add the roof.
And they'll be all set to be like ADA compliant from day one for the sidewalks and everything?
The four units on the ground floor...
Yeah.
Because Northborough doesn't like three or three-to-five-unit, I mean, story buildings.
Yeah.
So to keep it two stories, like the rest of the campus, the four on the ground will be all ADA compliant, and the four upstairs will be pretty much regular units.
Okay. And then, okay, and then the fence. I'm trying to think if I had anything else. And the construction vehicle, so it'll be, it'll be a minimum impact to the residents? And what type of, what time of year do you think it would be?
Most likely, it would be, you know, spring, try to be done by summer. I've just been involved with a project like this in Somerville.
Yep.
We took down 264 units. We're putting up 550 units in the same campus, and the first nine-story building is already done, and that only started last year.
Okay.
So it's pretty quick. And that only took a year because it's so many. It's nine stories, so obviously different concerns about safety and height and everything.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
My name is Ray Carlson. I live at 20 Emerson Road. I am also a board member for NAHC, the Northborough Affordable Housing Corp., and I am also a board member of the Housing Authority. Couple of things about this project in particular. Before we put pen to paper, we contacted the state to have them come out and look at the site to make sure it would be in compliance, and I believe they came twice. I know they came once when we first looked at it. I believe they came out a second time, and both times gave us the green light and said, "By all means, this would be a very good place to extend the campus." The other thing that's happening, and this would be in response to Ms. Howland's questions about loneliness and things that our seniors could take part in. The other hat that I wear is I'm an officer at Trinity Church, and we have entered into a partnership with the Housing Authority to look at some recreational and additional gardening space for the seniors at both this location and Heritage. So that is something, too, that is always on our radar. We want to make sure that our seniors are being served and that they have opportunities to have outdoor activities, help to combat the loneliness. So those things, we are definitely paying attention to. The last thing I just want to mention is I know that many of you got a handout as you came in. There were a number of items on the back that unfortunately had some misinformation that I believe will probably be questioned at some point. Mr. Bonney or anyone on the Housing Authority Board could certainly answer some of those questions that would come up either later tonight or in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Microphone B, please.
Lisa Micali, 13 Maple Street. I first have to say that I do think we need housing for many, many people, and certainly the veterans are close to my heart. My father and brother are both veterans, and my brother actually was in need of having to live in a situation like this after he returned from the Vietnam War. So that I understand totally what the veterans are, they don't get enough, so I really wanted to start with that. Second, I also became very familiar with the campus when I was the Select Board liaison to the Housing Authority. And coming in every time that I did and meeting with residents that were there, the parking is dismal. There's no way that there's enough parking in this facility for the people that are there. there. And the handicapped areas are not wide enough for somebody getting out of a car with a walker. They're just standard spaces. So you have 14 handicap spots in there now. One is a van and the rest are all just going to sign in front of them. So I would dare say that your parking facility is going to have to be enlarged to accommodate being able to get in and out of the vehicles with a walker or whatever is necessary for the AEB or the ADA or whoever makes the laws for handicapped accessibility. The buildings themselves, the front doors don't have ramps going up to them. There's a step up, so it's difficult again for somebody with a walker to get up onto those stairs. There's not enough area even for workmen to come in or FedEx or whatever delivery trucks might be there during the day. So that's a huge concern that I had, just walking around and being addressed by several different residents. The building itself is in a landlocked position. It has no access on its own and I don't feel comfortable by saying that you should be able to go through a gate through another municipal piece of land. If there's not enough area in its own land, it shouldn't be put there.
Say it again, miss. I didn't hear you, what you said. It shouldn't be what?
The building shouldn't be put there if they can't get there without being on their own property.
You have 30 seconds.
Library's public.
Yes, library's municipal. So in, to shorten the conversation then, I'm not going to be in support of this. I don't feel that it's the right place for it and we need to be able to have enough space for the recreation that was discussed for the people. Thank you.
Just so you know, there are four current van spots. There would also be the additional one there, one there specifically for the residents on that end. Currently, we have no one that operates a van, a handicap van. And the recreation stuff, we have a grant with Springwell where we have recreational activities at Colonial Village on Mondays and Thursdays and at Heritage Village on Tuesdays. And they include bingo, painting, chair yoga, a number of other activities. So, you know, we are always trying to increase the activities. And the library is right next door and the library has a whole array of services that they offer.
Good job. Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Mr. Moderator, Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street. Like one of our friends recently, I'm also on the ZBA. I have no, I'm speaking as I always do, as just Jacob Jones. And even if this comes before us, I'm not prejudging, I'm completely open-minded. I do share some of the concerns that have been shared about the parking and space and things. I do give a lot of consideration in this case to the work that our community preservation committee has done. And that is really weighing on me because they have thought about this project and other projects. In my mind, what I'm thinking is, okay, we have money allocated to spend on things like this. Sometimes it's which good option do we choose? And I wondered if very, very briefly, we might hear what other options are maybe coming up in the next few years that might get funded. I know I've heard of a Boundary Street project in some of the meetings. I don't think I've heard of any project for a property that has 24 acres that we bought last year that we were told was going to get possibly affordable housing. I'm not sure if that was genuine or not, but at any rate, they have lots of room for parking and fire station trucks turning around on that property. But I'm sorry, I'm not trying to make light of this, but my question ultimately is, what other options are we effectively saying no to this year by passing this one? And it may be, I may just agree and say this is the best of those options and support it, but I'd like to hear what those options were. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. We're not saying no to any opportunities brought before us this year. And as you brought up in the previous slide, we'll have reserves left over. In terms of the affordable housing opportunities, this one is the best and most doable in the short term. The additional units in the Boundary Street area that had been thought about are not practical at this time. The plan for a portion of the Whitney Street property is viable and active in the future. This past year, as I understand it, we've spent the time simply getting that property settled, getting it mapped appropriately so that we have the area where housing could be and the rest of it be ultimately protected by a conservation restriction. And in return, we expect to get a DCR reimbursement, if you didn't know, of $200,000 back into our reserves. So there were no other proposals that came before the CPA for this year that would be any more important or that certainly threatened the availability of money. And in future years, while we do look ahead, we only know of the potential to contribute to the projects that we're already building on, be it more open space, be it historic preservation of buildings we already have, or be it building more affordable housing, the three core areas. And there are no current draws on future funds, let's say FY '27 or '28. So we'll have the resources of similar money and probably greater resources each year going forward, which is good news.
Thank you.
How much time do I have, Fred, to speak, please? I want to be polite here. How much time?
I couldn't hear you.
How much time, sir, do I have to speak?
The same as always, three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. You know, like I said, I hear a lot of people genuflecting, thank you to Mitch Cohen, thank you to Stephanie Bacon, kissing the ass of the powerfully people in town, thank you to the fire chief. These people deserve to be, they do an excellent, excellent job. The Bible says that whatever ye has done for the least of my brethren. That is, when I was hungry, you fed me. When I was in need of housing, you gave me housing. Into the eternal kingdom. Now, those who don't do so, I want you to read Matthew 25. However, this, and I want to also, Kathleen, excellent job, that the gardens can go, it faces south, can go all around on the sides. The sun faces that way. It does not take a feasibility study to plant a tree. There's plenty of volunteers. Now, so when people say, you know, when I successfully sue these people for freedom of speech violations, I will donate all of the money to building gardens and I will, I put my labor where my mouth is. Okay, I'm not joking. Okay, I'll build anything you need. Okay, I'll do it completely for free. Okay, this is an excellent design, the micro housing right here. Now, when people talk about stuff like disabilities and stuff like that, most of the time they're not sincere. That's just excuses because they don't want poor people in town. And that's the truth, right? And they say, oh, yeah, we support disability, but it's just a delay and delay and delay so none of this can happen. There's plenty of options for affordable housing. You could put it in all these unoccupied buildings, say, oh, it's not safe and blah, blah, blah. There's people on the streets, seriously. You know, so you people are a bunch of liars, you just want a virtue signal. That's all you want to do, all this thing. You just don't want poor people in this town. But guess what? The Lord Jehovah is just.
Please stay within the boundaries.
But God bless you.
Please stay within the boundaries.
God bless you. God bless you for this. So absolutely support for this, you know, when I correctly sue these people for unconstitutional violations. And I ask them to seriously reflect and put their consciousness, okay? And ask if they're truly happy, okay? And inability to face the truth, but just use lies and deceptions and try to virtue signal, okay, when people are suffering. And that's what I have to say. So I hope that you don't look at me as rude, but this is the truth, okay? So really meditate on this.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Microphone A, please.
Doug Stone, 33 Virtual Road. And I just wondered what the second floor emergency EGREX plan is.
Be the same as the existing units, stare down the front, stare down the back.
Okay. And I know, I think we had talked about possibly putting some affordable housing on Whitney Street, the land that we just bought is, is that still on the table or?
We're very interested, but.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
First. Still an option, Doug, as we mentioned a minute ago.
Yeah, that was discussed earlier.
So there's a plan for that? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Clark, 493 Main Street. I'm also on the CPC committee. Again, many of the questions or concerns are all going to be handled in the design review process, you know. So whether the thing orients this way or that, or the tree gets planted here or there, or whatever it happens to be, the access road, all that is going to be by regulations, all that's going to be, go through all the appropriate boards, the ZBA, the fire department, all that. There cannot be a better place than this for adding affordable housing, existing resources, existing infrastructure, all the elements that make it easy to add to it and for the people that then occupy those homes to have a good life. So it would be almost inconceivable to find another location in town that would operate as effectively as this. Sadness is that it's only eight units and not 40 units so we could help out more people. And the CPC is very clear that this is one of the primary goals of the CPC is affordable housing. If you go to Cambridge, where they use 80% of their funds towards affordable housing, we have not demonstrated that commitment. And with Rick and other people involved here, it really is an essential thing. Everyone has said, yes, we're going to be taxed out of our things, this place is going to be too expensive. Here is an example to help out, you know, these are people that want to live in town, that are people that want to stay here and that cannot. And this is one of their only available options. And I think we really strongly have to consider this because this is a very, very good proposal. And thank you.
Thank you. And this will be our last speaker?
Rick Leaf, again, 30 Wells Farm Road. Just.
This gentleman is directly attached to town staff. No, I'm not. It's freedom of speech, Mitch.
No, no, we will not have that, we will not have that discussion here, okay? It's, that does not pertain to the business that we are here for. Thank you.
It's a truth, Mitch.
All right? No, I do not want to go down that path. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Leaf?
Rick Leaf, 30 Wells Farm Road. I just want to address the question about other affordable housing projects coming for the CPC. To date, since the CPC has been in existence in Northborough, the only organization who's brought affordable housing projects before the CPC is the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. We did attempt this year to bring two projects before the CPC, one you're hearing about tonight in conjunction with the Northborough Housing Authority. And we did have a project on town-owned land on Boundary Street that was deemed by the town to be not a good use of the property and was denied. So the one project that came before the CPC was this particular project. And we're going to have to learn more about how we go about building affordable housing on town-owned land. That will come up someday when a project becomes feasible on Whitney Street to get these units up at 100% affordable with a nonprofit developer-like habitat for humanity. It usually requires donation of the property so there's no land acquisition cost. That'll be a question that will come up on Whitney Street as it was on Boundary Street. But the fact of the matter is that there's been a slow development of affordable housing, except for when Avalon came in and dumped 382 units of housing in our town with 25% affordable. That was our major contribution to affordable housing. Other than that, it's been a slow process of small projects over time, which we'll continue to do. Like I said, Boundary Street is not going to be viable and Whitney Street may or may not be viable once we get down to actually proposing a project down there, depending on the abutter's view of that property, the select board's view of that property and other boards in town. But the answer to the question is the only affordable housing project before the CPC this year was the one before you tonight. There are no other short-term projects in the pipeline right now, although our housing corporation will continue to look for opportunities. Thanks.
Thank you. I actually said that Mr. Leaf would be the last speaker.
Just one question, one question. Go ahead, miss.
No.
Then I'll ask the question next time.
No, we've closed the discussion.
I motion to reconsider.
We can't reconsider, we haven't voted.
All right, whatever, I don't care.
Thank you. There was a statement over here, move the question? And seconded. So we need to vote on that now. Okay? We've done this a couple of times over the last few days, so I think everyone understands what that means. It means that we have decided we want to vote on stopping the discussion and debate. And then if that is the case, it's there. If we shoot down the motion to move the question, then discussion can continue. Okay? Do we have the graphic ready? Great, thank you so much. Move the question is a two-thirds majority vote. The voting has slowed, so I think we are pretty much there. Let's look at the results. The motion to move the question passes by the required two-thirds vote. We are back to Article 35. And this is the vote for Article 35. Are we clear on what we're voting on? And the voting has slowed significantly. We'll give it another 10 seconds. And I have to say this, the Article 35 is passed by the required majority vote. I mentioned earlier that I had had a conversation about possibly looking at Article 41 and Article 57. 51 and 47, thank you. And I mentioned that we would, you know, consider that when we reached the hour of 9:15. We're very close to that and if we go through another article, I think we might miss the window to be able to address those two important articles. So at this time, I would like to suggest that we move to Article 41.
47.
47, I don't, whatever happened in 41? Yes, thank you. And just so everyone knows what we're doing, what I'm going to do is ask the body to take a vote on taking these articles out of order so that it's clear that we know what we're talking about, we know what we're doing. We can do that by a hand vote if we think that we're pretty sure about this.
Will they ever contest presentation?
Yes, okay. I haven't heard a motion yet.
So moved.
So moved and seconded. So in order to save time, what I'm going to do is say, we can do a hand vote or a card vote. vote, and make sure that we have that there unless it's dangerously close. All those in favor of taking these articles out of order, please raise your cards. And those opposed, the motion passes. We now may go forward with Article 47.
47, thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a tax increment financing agreement pursuant to MGL Chapter 40, Section 59, and as may be applicable, the regulations of the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council for the property known as the St. Gobain Research America located at 9 Goddard Road, and to approve the submission of a TIF plan, T-I-F plan, and agreement to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, and further, to authorize the Select Board to negotiate and execute any agreements and documents necessary to implement, and it said, TIF agreement and TIF plan, and to take such action, such other actions as are necessary or appropriate to implement the TIF agreement, or take any other action, or just end the TIF agreement.
Motion has been made and seconded. Presentation by our town administrator.
Good evening, everyone. Let's talk about TIFs. What is a TIF? Ooh, sugar, hold on. Oh goodness, hold on. There we go. All right. TIF is an acronym for Tax Increment Financing. In Massachusetts, a TIF is actually a specific type of tax increment. It's a tool that allows municipalities to invest in redevelopment projects by capturing the future increase in property tax revenue generated by those improvements. This does not raise taxes, but rather redirects future tax revenue to pay for development costs. It stimulates business growth, creates jobs, and expands the tax base over time. This is a good slide. We'll explain it a little bit better. So if you look at pre-investment property taxes, picture St. Gobain being as it is. And in the adjustment line, picture the new addition, the business expansion, and that incremental tax is what we would negotiate an agreement with, whether it be a variable over five years to all the way to 20, certain percentage we would not tax them on in order for them to be able to recoup their losses from building and become stable. So they're part of our economy moving forward. Let's see. So since TIFs use projected future tax revenue from increased property values, it doesn't require new taxes or debt increases for current residents. Without TIF, some projects would not happen or would require tax increases to fund them. Many of our surrounding towns, just like Marlboro, enter into two to three TIF agreements per year revitalizing neighborhoods and driving economic development. Data shows increased property values, job creation, and business growth resulting from TIF projects. What if a project fails? TIFs only use funds generated by successful redevelopment, reducing financial risk for taxpayers. Many TIF agreements include performance benchmarks and community benefits to ensure accountability. So tonight, we have an exciting economic development opportunity involving St. Gobain, a company that has proudly called Northborough home for over 40 years. We're presenting a tax increment financing request to support their proposed expansion, a highly competitive project being considered among eight global innovation centers around the world. As I outlined in my TIF presentation, these agreements can be viewed in two ways. You can see the glass half-empty, assuming they'll build it anyway, or you can see it as half-full, recognizing that the tools like TIFs are how communities show support and strengthen their partnership with key employers. In this case, there is no guarantee the project will move forward without local support. Local incentives and support, like TIF, help show St. Gobain's global leadership, that Northborough is the right place to invest. The mothership of St. Gobain has so many projects before them to decide between, which is why we want to support them as much as possible. If approved, the end result is a significantly higher tax base, more local jobs, and increased economic activity across our community, from gas stations to restaurants to shops. Let me be clear, the town does not lose tax revenue. Just like the slide showed, the current taxes remain unchanged, and St. Gobain would receive a temporary tax savings only on a portion of the new value created through their investment. Over time, that investment returns many times over in both revenue and opportunity for the town. Tonight, we are fortunate to have Todd DeNoya, Vice President of Innovation and Research and Development at St. Gobain. Todd, would you like to come over and talk a little bit about the project?
So thank you for the introduction, and thank you for having me here. So as mentioned, my name is Todd DeNoya. I'm the VP of Innovation and R&amp;D for St. Gobain North America. Can tell you a little bit about the project. If you're familiar with St. Gobain, we're a leading industrial manufacturer from construction products to life sciences-type materials. The research center we're speaking about in question has been in Northborough for over 40 years. It was established in 1985. We occupy 200,000 square feet of building and lab space across 26 acres of land, and we house about 350 people, mainly in research and development, engineers, scientists, technicians across the campus. We're very active in the local environment, both with universities and startups. We host many visitors to our centers. We average about 6,500 visitors to our centers on an annual basis who put money back into the community. And we actually try to be good stewards of the community ourselves. We invest back in the Northborough community. In the past few years, we've given about $30,000 to various charities and organizations to support our local community and employees. We're proposing capital improvements, about 80,000 square feet of space on the campus over the next five years. It includes a full building renovation, building additions, and upgrading our services. It includes improvements to our main campus building, which was built in 1985 in Northborough, upgrading our HVAC system, our roof, windows, insulation to meet the Mass Energy State Stretch Code, and to achieve green building certifications like LEED and WELL. It aligns with our company vision, which is to make the world a better home and be a leader in light and sustainable construction is one of our core visions. The project in the site with the additions is expected to bring approximately 60 high-paying jobs into Northborough. That's engineers, technicians, and scientists mainly. Increased property tax revenues for the town is mentioned and provide strong and continued economic contribution to the local community. We hope such investment and improvements into our R&amp;D center continue to establish the site as a leading industrial research center for St. Gobain with a strong and growing workforce in Northborough for many more years to come. As mentioned, we are a cost center as being an R&amp;D site, so we compete with other St. Gobain locations that turn profits, mainly our manufacturing sites across North America. We have about 160 manufacturing sites across North America, U.S. and Canada. So it's particularly important to show we have local and state economic support for such long-term growth investments. And a TIF would be important to kind of show that support to our parent company when we bid for capital funds. St. Gobain, the town of Northborough, we're looking to create a forward-looking partnership which will be mutual benefit for decades to come, and I'm here to answer any questions as well. So thank you.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is ask appropriations for their opinion on Article 47.
Mr. Moderator, while supportive of the idea and concept and having written a letter of support for this proposal, the Appropriations Committee did not weigh in on this article due to not having specific information at the time, and we had no additional information prior to town meeting, so we're still in that same moment. So supportive of the concept, we just don't know the details of what might be negotiated, so we didn't have information to deliberate upon.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or debate on Article 47?
Michael Shaka, 120 Maynard Street. First off, I think it's great that we're showing some element of being friendly to business. That's, you know, I think wonderful. I think it's a good investment for the community and our long-term success. But there's a lot of questions on this. There's a lot of information that wasn't shared, and I think we need some, quite a bit more clarification on that. I'm familiar with these programs, I've seen them work out great, I've seen them fail terribly. With regard to the expansion, what, well, actually before I even ask that, what period of time is the tax incentive? I didn't, maybe I missed it, was there a chart that shows the?
No, you didn't. We do not have an official agreement yet. It's to authorize us to actually make an agreement.
Okay, so, so there's no commitment there for that? All right, so, so there's no period of time that's defined? Is there an anticipated period of time that you would do this? I mean, I'm just thinking about a similar situation with the DEC building, the digital equipment building in Maynard, it was a, you know, the old DEC with the clock there. When DEC moved out, they gave them 10 years free, zero tax, and based on, you know, providing improvements. And the result was is that they didn't invest anything in terms of improvement, and for 10 years, the town of Maynard had a huge vacuum, and it sucked all that tax revenue that was once there, and the tax burden went directly to the, you know, the residents. So the period of time is very important to know. The other bit is, if we provide this, what accountability is there that they're going to actually deliver on the improvements?
That is something that we would write into the agreement. For instance, if they said with this, 60 jobs will come along, and they did not provide for 60 new positions, then we could stop the TIF.
Yeah, so, so I guess, you know, speaking candidly, while I love the idea, and I think it's fantastic if we could do it, it's really scary to be having a conversation of, yeah, you know, trust me, give me the authority to be able to do this, and it's almost like, you know, you know, sign the bill, vote for it, and we'll read it later, right? I mean, that's, that's what this is. So I?
Yeah, there would be open communication prior.
Quiet, quiet, please.
Right, Stephanie?
Please, quiet.
Yeah, it's, it's actually hard to think when you have all of these interruptions, Mr. Moderator.
I understand.
Thank you. Yeah, so we would have open conversations about what we're going to be putting in the agreement, back and forth between the different, you know, parties at hand, the Select Board. Okay, yeah.
So, you know, there's no commitment of dollars to this, which is, you know, that's relieving.
There isn't. We're not at that point yet. Yes, I understand. So, so the reason why we brought this TIF forward is because of the major competition that, there's eight global St. Gobains between, over the world, and so they're competing with many other projects. A huge part of it is local support, and if they don't have that local support for something like a TIF, it could really sink the project.
Okay, so essentially, this is going to have to just be based on trust that the Select Board are good negotiators, and that they don't make this be, you know, 100-year, you know, tax rebate.
Yeah, no, 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 absolutely not. This is, this is the opportunity to allow a business to expand. They've been with us, they've been excellent neighbors for 40 years, and this is just the opportunity to help them grow, which only helps us grow in the future.
Completely understand, I get, I mean, it's akin to opportunity zones and investment in.
And that is our focus and our drive, is economic development opportunities, because of course, everybody's sick of writing checks. We want the revenue to come back our way.
Yeah, I like it, I'm just really uneasy in the fact that it, that there's very little information provided with regard to the term of the tax incentive and also any commitment to actually follow through with the development, so.
Yeah, and that, I mean, you're right, we don't, we don't have that, but anything that we can put in the body to protect the town, of course, that would be done. And that's very standard to put that into the terms, that, you know, if there aren't, like I brought up before, the positions that you said would be filled, you know, 60 people coming as a new part of the workforce, then, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, thank you.
Cease the.
Yeah, I would love, I would love to be in favor of this, and I'm not saying I'm not, but I almost would ask you, Mitch, the Board of Selectmen, if there's anything that you guys could say to give me the warm and fuzzies on, you know, it would be.
I think it's just another tool in our toolbox that we can use to help create economic incentives.
I will ask the Chair of the Board of Select, the Select Board to be able to give a response to your question.
Thank you, Mitch Cohen. If you could turn on, there we go, Mitch Cohen, Chair of the Northborough Select Board. Yes, I will share some warm and fuzzies. I've had the opportunity to have a couple of meetings with Todd and some of his staff, with Stephanie. This property that St. Gobain is on is also in Marlboro. It's more in Northborough than Marlboro, hooray. So we also had some Marlboro folks there, including the mayor and their economic development director. A really, really good meeting, they walked us through details of the project, tour of both the existing building that they plan to renovate and expand, as well as a building that they recently did, talked about a building that they are in the process of adding that is unfortunately entirely on the Marlboro side, so they're going to get the tax benefit of that one. This is a really, really good project. This, I am, I'll be honest, I'm somewhat uncomfortable bringing a request to the body to approve a TIF that we haven't yet negotiated, because this is a company that, we understand what they're doing, they're not doing anything that folks in town would not like. They hire great people, they're, just run a really, really good facility that employs a lot of Northborough residents, plenty. I am comfortable going forward and asking for permission to negotiate a TIF for the Board to then negotiate with St. Gobain through Stephanie. I want to make sure that the Appropriations Committee is intimately involved in that process. There are a couple of other TIFs that are also on the warrant that will come a little bit later. We'll be passing over those because those are not at this stage yet. This one is in a special case where we really want to go forward, we really want St. Gobain corporate in Europe to go ahead and say, yeah, Northborough is going to be a great partner in this, we're going to sink tens of millions of dollars of their money into doing this. We will then be the beneficiary of that in a number of ways, including the future tax revenue. I appreciate that, I can't tell you, you know, the details of the TIF yet, typically, if not ever, any longer than 10 years, and typically, they are, they are usually a ramp-up as far as the revenue that the town gets, but it's always in addition to what they pay now, and there is no, has been no discussion, no request of the town spending any money on this project. This is just additional tax revenue that we will get, and I hope that's the warm and fuzzies you're looking for.
Not as much as I'd like. I'd love for St. Gobain to give a period of time of expectation that they would have. Are you comfortable saying that, you know, we would request no longer than five years or 10 years, or just provide some level of comfort on what your expectation is?
So I think, you know, we'll bring in our.
Calling you on the spot.
Yeah, no, we'll bring in our staff to negotiate the TIF and the terms of the agreement. And, you know, we want to be favorable for Northborough just as much as you do, actually, because it is about the employees and the resources, the jobs in the town, right? So we've been here for 40 years, we want to continue to have that relationship, and the best thing to do is to have a great relationship with the town that's hosting you. So we do want to be mutually beneficial, so we both kind of grow in process from that. And I think we'll work with them on, you know, term negotiation, other factors involved.
All right, all right, thank you. Mitch, I tried to get an answer out of him, Mitch. All right.
Thank you.
Well, good luck.
Microphone A, please.
Yes, Gibb Chase, Juniper Brook. Mitch, typically, you know, to move ahead and put something on the warrant like this when we don't have information, and your own appropriation commission and others don't even have full information on this, I sat in when the Massachusetts. commission and others don't even have full information on this. I sat in when the Massachusetts Economic Development gave you a briefing up at the library. There's a heck of a lot of questions on this that we don't know. And of all the studies, there's been about 30 studies of communities here in Massachusetts, and probably many more elsewhere, where the intents are not fulfilled with this type of a designation. And, you know, they advise, usually, communities in the states advise, when you're considering a TIF, before you designate, that you do a comprehensive analysis to identify potential impacts on our budget, on resident taxpayers. I don't know what the annual cost to the taxpayers are gonna be.
There's no cost to the residential taxpayers for a TIF.
Oh, yeah. Anyway, if there's an increased debt, debt in the project doesn't generate enough tax revenue, who pays for that? You know, a lot of these subsidized projects may not fully cover the cost of public services, and they require increases in fire and police protection, which will lead to higher costs for our own town citizens here that pay the taxes on this. I don't know anything about your company. You may do good work, and I wish I had a firmer handle on just how the TIF works and everything. But I don't know how, in good conscience, you know, again, you're putting the horse before the cart, on just throwing this stuff into the warrant, and let's see what happens. It sounds good, you know, you vote on it. There's a cost here. And a lot of your speculation that you throw out here on the economics and jobs and everything, you can't guarantee that. And you can't make a decision on something and ignore the whole economic crisis situation that we're in now and foreseeable future going on, inflations, recessions, and everything else. I mean, you know, we're, again, working backwards.
I mean, it's definitely not working backwards. We're not losing anything. That pre-investment property tax is where we are-
I'm sorry. Please, I've asked you repeatedly to be quiet. You were doing very well early. I'm going to ask the officers to remove you from the hall. Please. And again, I apologize to the body.
Anyway, so the pre-investment property tax is where we are now. You're not going to lose any, any tax whatsoever. The adjustments is their new expansion, and the incremental tax base is what we would give them a TIF on. So the new value of that expansion. And it could be any percent. It could be, you know, 20%, 30%, 40. It's varied. That is what is made within the agreement. And typically, it does not exceed 20 years. I'm not saying at all we would go 20 years. We might go three years. But those are the terms that we would have to agree upon.
Were you here first?
Over here.
Hi, thank you. Carter Brandon, 22 Sherland Drive. Well, first, I think, I mean, Saint Gobain is a large international company that does a lot of stuff, and a lot of people have heard of. And it's, you know, I've always been very proud that Northborough has an important part in such a, such a major company. And from what I've seen of the kind of plans of this, I think there's a lot about the construction project and expansion that's very exciting for our town. The only, I mean, I had, looking at some of the stuff that had been presented at a few boards, there were a couple concerns that I had about mostly the site plan. Ideally, like, it's really the parking lot. I'd rather see more of the open space protected on the property. And I was, my question about this here was whether the permitting boards and other committees that would be involved in approving this project would be collaborated with at all while negotiating the TIF.
Oh, of course, they would, just like any other building development in town. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to make a comment on the project as well. Majority of renovation will include kind of redoing our main building on campus, which is 100,000 square foot building built in 1985. We'll be adding additions off that building, but essentially be around the existing footprints of the current building space. The building mentioned in Marlboro is on new space. It is taking new land, okay? So it's really centered around our main campus structure already.
Microphone A, please.
Thank you. Brian Cole, 4 Lawrence Street. I'm a relative newcomer to Northborough. From Milford, in the past, the TIFs were brought after they were negotiated for final approval to the town meeting. Is that not the case here? This is-
It's not the case, only because they need local backing. Typically, yes.
Typically, yes, but not-
That's what would happen, absolutely.
Alright, very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Susan Sartori, 465 Green Street. Steph, thank you very much for bringing, you know, some creativity to economic development. And sir, I welcome, you know, a partnership with you. What I want is a process question answered for me. Mr. Cohen has stated that he would be willing to negotiate with the town staff. His tenure will be up in 13 days. Is this getting done in the next 13 days?
No.
Yeah, no, I wasn't speaking for myself. The board would be negotiating-
You stated that you would be happy to do it. So I wanted to find out when the timeline is for this. When do you have to work this out?
Yeah, as soon as-
When does the project-
Go ahead. Yeah.
So, right now, we're in the design phases of the project, and we can start negotiations with the town on the TIF, I guess, as soon as they're ready, as soon as the town's ready. We're looking to finish our construction design with the architectural firm by the fall. But I need to get my approvals for capital appropriations from my parent company.
When are your approvals? When do you need to have those?
We're working through those processes now. So I'm doing, I'm doing those preparation reports and approvals with the parent company.
So would you have no problem at all with the TIF negotiations beginning after our election? That is on the 13th?
Yeah, I have no reason to think that negotiations with the board would start before the 13th.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Thank you, Mr. Rottary. John Marr, 44 Weston Terrace. Thank you, Stephanie, for bringing this opportunity to the table. I think there's a few points of emphasis here. Again, we've talked about budget constraints. We've talked about Prop 2.5. I think the town's faced with, you know, an issue of trying to diversify their tax revenue basis between commercial and residential use. And to have an investment-grade global company provide a commitment, a financial commitment to the area, I think this is a wonderful opportunity to demonstrate that Northborough is open for business, and that is looking to kind of help out and diversify its tax basis, so that the resident is not faced with the complete burden. I think this is, obviously, it's a little bit unusual from a perspective of coming to the town and asking for approval currently. But I think the credit worthiness of the tenant and the importance of that tenant to the economic viability of the area is extremely important. So I would definitely agree and support this. My only question, was just curious, is, does Saint Gobain have any statistics on indirect jobs in the area as well, not just direct from the company? Thank you.
So this is, this is an analysis that was done from a partner of ours with Saint Gobain, using a US economic model that's commonly used for these development projects. So we're approximating the 63 employees added. The direct impact in terms of contribution of people to the project is 134. Indirect impact is 181. Induced impact 204. And the output from the model that was used is about 156 million in total kind of economic value created over the lifetime of the project. We're looking to do this over the next five years, okay? And you can see some of the estimated financial impact from the model, both for Marlboro and Northborough that was estimated. And you can see where we have the estimate of the future value, considerable increase in taxes, you know, from what we pay today versus the potential final value, depending on the scale of the project we're able to complete.
Microphone A, please.
She was first.
Microphone B, then.
Lisa Misselli, 13 Maple Street. I was on the board when you came to make a presentation with screens covering all of the faces and names. I did do some research. First off, you're a very well-known company in the town, and we're very appreciative of all that you have done for the town. And you've been a great, a great neighbor, and certainly a wonderful company. I know that you're more than a $20 billion international company. You've, you've come with great pedigree. I'm concerned in that you have a timeline that, that doesn't allow us to do things in the normal fashion. That coming to make a TIF for the first time that we've had one in many, many years, that I think the town should be a part of that. I think they should understand what the benefits are and what they will receive from what the actual TIF will be. I do know that it can, it should be, and probably will be, related to your employees, because there's something else in Massachusetts that requires that. So X amount of employees gives the credibility of you supplying what you're saying with the TIF. Am I correct on that? That it is tied in with the employees?
Yes.
Okay. So, and that putting together the worksheet, I know that Marlboro has offered to be a part of that, and I'm glad to hear that. Gives me a little bit more comfort. But I do feel that I would be much happier to have everything happen where people saw it and were aware of it, and that we, if necessary, would go to a town meeting, a special town meeting, instead of just, well, we're gonna work with what we have. You know, we've had an awful lot of trust, and trust is getting, you know, it's a little bit difficult without having dollars and cents. As you've seen, this meeting has been full of dollars and cents. And I would, I would say that I would be more comfortable knowing all of the details before we agree to this. Thank you.
Now, A.
Thank you. Jack Backstrand, 76 Cedar Hill Road. Just so I can understand correctly, the gentleman here from Saint Gobain is asking the town to give the town the right to negotiate with Saint Gobain. Has the project inside of Saint Gobain been approved for Northborough?
So I'm working on that approval, and the TIF process or having local support is part of my submission for approval.
So to say it another way, you're internally battling for funds within the corporation. Northborough is one of the allowed organizations to compete for those funds. You're here saying, hey, listen, if you give me the opportunity to negotiate the TIF, that puts me in a better position to be able to get those funds.
Exactly, correct.
You're not making any commitment to this town. You're not making any commitment to how many years. You can't even go forward if you go to your corporation and say, geez, I didn't get the TIF funds. Because the immediate response from corporate is gonna be, geez, we've got better opportunities elsewhere in the world. Sorry, this time isn't for you.
It does impact the scale of the investment and what I'm able to achieve on total.
Right, right. So nothing is being negotiated here, folks. There's no taxpayer dollars. All we're trying to do is to get this gentleman in the best position possible to get his corporate buddies to say, we want to invest in Northborough. If you walk out of here and go back to your organization, and you tell them, I could not get that TIF, what are the odds that they're gonna say, thanks for trying. We've got a number of organizations around the world that we can get a better investment return on our investment. We're looking at proverbial gift to us in the mouth if we walk away from this. This is really silly to be even talking about.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Christopher Brandon, 22 Sherland Drive. I just had a question on, as, all of our properties are going to be increasing taxes over the coming years. You know, we had a 10% increase this year. We're gonna have future increases going forward. On the existing tax base that they're paying, like, as part of that TIF, as part of the chart, that lower portion, as our properties proportionally go up, will that portion go up as well, or is the TIF eliminating any, or is it locking that rate in?
Is it, so, for instance, Northborough's current building value is 17 million.
Correct. So does that, is that, does the TIF lock that rate in, or does-
So, so the TIF, we will always collect taxes on that 17 million. So Northborough's future is 90 million in value, with the projected tax of 1.3 million. So that, that delta between what we get now and what the new value is, that's the only area where we would provide a TIF agreement. So we will always get the same taxes that we've received. It's just the new value, that's what we'll give them a temporary tax savings on.
Okay, so, so whatever, if we didn't do it, and that 17 million, they didn't do it, that, as that value went up over the next few years, they were paying additional taxes on that?
Correct.
Would they still be paying additional taxes on that initial balance? It's just the-
Oh, absolutely.
Incremental stuff that is not getting-
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Cynthia Turner, Church Street. So I'm not, as I mentioned when I was up here before, I've lived here a year and a half, which doesn't really account for my ignorance of this company, because it's a large company. But I am ignorant of the company. So, a few minutes ago, I was looking it up to learn something about it. And I'm not saying one way or the other, whether I support this. I'm not saying one way or the other about the company. But I just wanted to bring something to light that I found, because I think people should be aware of it. And then you can speak to it. So I'm gonna read this. This is from Wikipedia, and I understand Wikipedia can have mistakes, but this issue does definitely exist. So even if there's little details wrong. Saint Gobain had contaminated groundwater supply with PFAS, which is a highly persistent contaminant acid, in multiple towns in southern New Hampshire. Elevated levels of this acid were found in 2016 near the Saint Gobain plant in Merrimack. Pollution has been occurring for over 20 years. Saint Gobain deliberately and intentionally constructed a bypass stack to thwart environmental inspections and avoid PFAS removal. Despite this, despite this flagrant violation of their permit, they were allowed to continue to operate. Former state rep and environmental scientist Mindy Messmer has claimed links between exposure to Saint Gobain's PFAS emissions and kidney and renal pelvis cancer, testicular cancer, female breast cancer, prostate cancer, ulcerative-
Mr. Moderator, is this, I don't think this is relating to the Northborough side of Saint Gobain.
Actually, it is. Yeah, I'm gonna finish.
Does it have anything to do with TIFs that they may have been in agreement on? Or are you talking about-
No, this is about the company. So if we're gonna be, if we're gonna be supporting this company at all.
I just want to make sure that we stay within the boundary.
Yeah, this is about support of the company.
Is that a state?
Excuse me? No, please let me finish. It's very short. Anyway, thyroid disease, high cholesterol, cardiovascular impacts. As of 2022, Saint Gobain is involved in multi-million dollar class action lawsuits. Its former company lawyer was terminated after he repeatedly, repeatedly urged the company to do more to address contamination from their plants in Merrimack, Bennington, Vermont, and Housick Falls, New York. Now, all those places are out of state. Okay, so the, so what's in Northborough might not have a direct environmental impact. But we have to consider, if this is still an ongoing problem, and that would be the question I am posing, do we want to be supporting a company? It doesn't matter if the environmental impacts are in our backyard. If this is a continual with the problem with the company, then, then we have to question whether our town can be supporting such a company.
I, if I were asking a question, a follow-up question, I'm certainly not doing that. But my question would be, you've presented a number of negatives, and I'm sure that there are an equal number of positives out there about this organization. And I think we can't judge just listening to negatives. We have to have fair and balanced, to, you know, use that overused quote.
Right. And I did preface this whole thing by saying, I'm not saying one way or the other about the company. But one should look at the company when making these decisions. Is this not just a matter of money? This is a more holistic thing. Do we want to be supporting this company? So take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Microphone B, please. Microphone B, please.
I'm tired from the last few nights of being waterboarded about the cost of this town. I'm tired of people who want to have a more affordable town and will not vote for allowing the board to negotiate this. It's allowing them. It's not the specifics, details of the design of the building or how big this is going to be. It's the, it's the negotiation and then when they negotiate that, they bring that back to the town. Now, if you don't like that, go back to the master plan in this town, rip out everything about commercial and economic development and live with the consequences. Thank you.
Microphone A, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street. Mr. Moderator, first I express gratitude for the gentleman who traveled here to talk to us and educate us. I express gratitude to someone who's not been thanked enough. Here are town administrator, who I've interacted with a lot and she's been very helpful. And in this case, has been helpful in bringing us an opportunity. I'm not sure, as many have expressed, there may be a package I'd be willing to support and there's probably lots of packages I wouldn't be support. But, Mr. Moderator, I do have a question if the gentleman would be able to answer it. And I understand this is, he may not be able to answer it. It's maybe unknowable. But in the timeline we're talking about here, I understand that there's a presentation being made to some probably C-suite folks who are deciding where to allocate some company resources between potentially eight different sites. And it sounds to me like there's a decision of how much, if any, of those resources may be allocated to our site. If we vote today to say, yes, we give the power to our select board to negotiate this, does that lock us in or is it going to be depending on how that negotiation goes or do you know? Does the gentleman know?
Please.
No, I think we, we still have to negotiate an agreement that the town's happy with and we're happy with. That still has to happen. So, yeah, so I think that.
Closer to the mic, please.
Sorry. No, we still have to negotiate an agreement with the town that the town is happy with and that we're happy with. So we just were entering that phase of the agreement. So that's, that's the only thing that's being voted on today is to have us to have the right to negotiate an agreement.
Right, and maybe, I think you may have answered the question, but my question is more, it seems like the C-suite is looking for, do the voters support generally the idea? If we say, yes, we do, is that enough to convince them? Go make whatever deal you can make or do we have to, is it going to depend on the outcome of how shrewd or relaxed our select board is in their negotiation?
So the, the investment has a lot of factors. This is one positive factor if I have support from the town. It's very positive to have the town supporting our local investments, specifically when they're long-term investments. It's a, it's a research site. We, we've been here 40 years. I'd like to be here 40 years more if we could, right? So that's the, I think it just gives that nice support. We know we have the community as part of our team.
I understand that and I want to convey the message that this part of the community who's speaking right here does support this partner and hope that they can make a decision to invest in us regardless of what the outcome of this is. I'm a little concerned again with the timing and the procedure and giving unlimited authority. I have a lot of trust in our select board, however, that they'll make a good decision if we do give them that authority. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. We have the last two speakers. I'm going to go to microphone B.
Hi, Sora Absemani from 47 Little Pond Road. I'm hoping to look at that chart again because I think it's causing confusion, at least for me.
Sorry, what chart?
The chart of like the graph of their taxes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that.
That one. Okay, yes.
So that makes it look like that after five to 10 years, five to 20 years, they stop paying property taxes.
No, 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 that, that was just.
That's what that is, though.
Okay, well, no, that's just an example of something that you could do with the years. That they're variable between five to 20 years. So you could, it's just showing the pre-investment and the growth and what you'd be taxed on. So no matter what, you will always recoup the same taxes that you were before the expansion happened. That expansion area where it says adjustments, picture the new building there. The incremental tax is the tax based on that new value.
I, I kind of understand. I'm just saying that the pre-investment property tax is what they have currently. Shouldn't that be ongoing forever?
Oh, it is ongoing.
So why does it stop post-TIF taxes?
It's just a slide. I don't know.
It's really because then all of the items are combined. That there's no more discount anymore. They're just, they're just paying the usual rate on all of their property.
Because that seems to be what's causing the confusion is people think that we're going to stop charging them tax because that's what that chart says. So as long as, as long as it's understood that they're going to continue to pay taxes. That's, that's all I just.
Thank you. Microphone A, please.
Doug Stone, 33 Berchel Road. I'll give you an example of a TIF that we did with Coleman House a number of years ago. It was a 10-year TIF. And the way that works is that the first year of the assessed value, they paid 10% and they conceded 90% of the tax, the assessed tax value. The next year, they paid 20%, conceding 80% of the tax value. So I would just hope that the selectmen could negotiate something a little bit more aggressive than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything that our presenter would like to add before we go to vote?
I just thank you for the consideration and, you know, the various questions and the opportunity to be here tonight. I know it's been a long town hall meeting and thank you for allowing me a slot to come in a little earlier and appreciate the consideration. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the slide for this, right? Great. What we're voting on is Article 47. It is a simple majority vote and the voting is open. Okay, the voting has slowed. Let's see what the results are. Article 47 passes by the majority vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move you jump to Article 51?
We can, but I want to just ask the body if anyone would be willing to make a motion to suspend the rules that we can go through this additional article that has a very short timeline on it. I know, but it's close to it.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second? Okay, all in favor, please, let's just raise our hands. Okay, those opposed? Okay, we will extend the meeting to be able to get this article through and see how it goes. No.
Do you want a motion that we, to, to jump to 51 first?
We already made the motion and passed to suspend the rules. And then, and we also talked about, we also talked about, you know, jumping to 51. So we're ready to go.
Mr. Moderator, a move that the town vote to authorize the select board to grant and convey to Massachusetts Electric Company, National Grid, permanent utility easements on the portion or portions of the town-owned property at 65 West Main Street, the site of the new fire station, as described and indeed recorded with the Worcester South Registry of Deeds in block, book 68237, page 362, and as approximately shown on the plan entitled Northborough Fire Station Easement dated October 8, 2024. Said plan on file with the town clerk on such terms and conditions as the select board deemed appropriate and further to authorize the select board to enter into agreements and execute any documents or instruments necessary to effectuate the purpose of this article.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Presentation by our fire chief.
For those of you that were in a special town meeting, the presentation will be about the same length.
Oh, no.
No. I promise. I'm tired. This is really a simple, this is just a utility easement that allows a utility, in this case, National Grid, access to their equipment for installation, maintenance, things such as their power, their pole, their lines, those types of things. So they can actually come on and do the work they need to do. It's that simple.
The select board unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate on Article 51?
So if this votes no, does that mean you guys don't get electricity? I don't understand. I don't, I'm just.
If, if this votes no, that means that National Grid won't put any electricity on our property.
Okay.
For now. So that would be a big problem.
Okay.
Any other discussion or debate? Are we ready for the graphic? Okay. The voting is now open. And I forgot to mention, this is a 2/3rds majority. The voting has slowed down, so I believe we're close to it. Has anyone not had the opportunity to vote? Let's look at the results. Chief, the lights will be on when you get home, okay? There's been a motion to adjourn. There's a gentleman at the microphone. You, yes, please.
Chris Brandon, 22 Sherlin Drive. I actually have a motion to extend the meeting tonight to at least 11 o'clock. You know, we're getting nowhere going through these motions. We're going to be going into next week at this rate.
There's, there's actually a motion on the floor to adjourn and I have to address that first. Okay? I can't hear what you're saying back there.
I think we lost the quorum. I think they walked out the door. I don't think we have enough people to even vote.
We can, we can vote until someone questions the quorum. But at the same time, no one had questioned the quorum when those, that motion was made. Yes, I'm talking about the motion to adjourn. So do we, do we need to have this electronic or can we do it hand vote? Those in favor of adjournment? And those opposed? See everybody tomorrow evening. Thank you so much.